All right, it is six P M. We're gonna go ahead and begin our briefing session for this evening. And we will start with item one, discuss agenda item. City manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. The considered in the night, I'm just gonna walk through this real quick. Item seven A is just consider the minutes for the October twenty first City Council regular meeting, and if there's any questions, Chiquita Taylor is available. Regarding that item. Item seven B is a resolution to purchase Dell computers from Weaver Government Solutions, not exceed one hundred thirty thousand dollars for. And this was a budgeted item this year to replace all the computers that, you know, we have throughout the city. And I think the phase is to do one by now and another by later, but Clayton Ganser is here to answer any questions regarding that purchase. Questions? Okay, items seven C is a considered resolution for the procurement of network equipment from Toto Verde in the amount of ninety two thousand five hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty three cents. This item and the next item are actually, they're actually, they're, while they're the same company and they're doing the same thing. Item C is really geared toward all our water infrastructure, like connect, you know, for networking for pump stations, sewer system, et cetera. And if there's any questions, Clayton is also available. Okay, item seventy again is, is the same thing, but again, it's more for our general infrastructure, networking for other, other pieces of equipment and property throughout the city. And again, if there's any questions, Clayton's on standby.
Just a quick, quick question. So, Mr. Ganser, we've used Toto Verde for quite a bit, they've topped us out. So, this is the next phase and they give us to a next level or?
So, this project is to address a lot of our security debt that we have. We, our old security appliance, we've taken it out of commission, it's old, it doesn't work, and so we've explored different options. Toto Verde did, as you know, did a lot of work for us. We did look at other options and other vendors, and this, they still provided the best value. On top of that, they know our infrastructure and our system very well, so the ramp up to get them, this project going is a lot shorter. Kind of a double benefit there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Item seventy is based, is approving the twenty twenty one International Property Maintenance Code, as well as the twenty twenty one International Energy Conservation Code. This item was on the agenda last, in October, and it was technically approved. However, the way that the item was written, it wasn't, it really didn't specifically spell it out. We had a conversation with Mr. Hager afterwards, and it just, on the advice of our city attorney, we're bringing it back as just kind of, really just to dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure it is approved as, as, as spelled out. So, that, that's this item tonight, but we're available for any questions on that as well. Um, well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. We'll move on to item two, City Council Agenda. I'm sorry, City Council Calendar.
City Secretary. Thank you, Mayor. First, today is Election Day, so if you haven't done so already, polls close at seven P M. November sixth is the Z B A meeting at seven P M. November the eighth is the Arbor Day event from nine to ten thirty at Armstrong Park, and the Veterans Day event and Movies in the Park, which is also a double feature, and that one is at Armstrong Park, and it begins at five thirty, five thirty P M. On November the ninth is the Planning and Zoning Meeting at seven, and the Park Board Meeting at six. Veterans Day Holiday on the eleventh. On the seventeenth, we have the Keith Duncanville Beautiful Meeting and the Arts Commission Regular Meeting, which was moved to the seventeenth because of the Thanksgiving holiday. And we have a tip for a regular meeting on the nineteenth. On the twenty second is the Lions Club Breakfast. We don't have a Coffee with the Mayor this month due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And we also, on the twenty fourth, we have the D C D C Regular Meeting at six P M.
Okay, to that point on the Coffee with the Mayor, I've gotta look at December and November and figure out, I don't wanna go two months without one. So, I will be looking at this calendar more closely. I'm sorry I hadn't for this, because I want to make sure I get one of those two events in.
Okay. Just let me know.
Mayor, I'd still like to make a comment of, say this, I mean, I'm glad we have this one, but I still would like multiple, at least three months.
At least three months?
Three.
Yeah, because we're always having to look ahead and trying to figure out where we're going, but.
Yeah, three months. A lot of these things aren't planned out for three, for three months, so we're gonna be missing a lot. Would you, would you take two?
Yes, two would be better than that, but it's.
Well, let's do that, let's, let's see if we can do this, and we'll talk to the city manager more about it, but let's see if we can have something posted that we can look at. We, a calendar that's being updated as we go along, and then we'll get whatever the final results. But we'll still go two months if we can, if we've got two months, I think that'd make perfect sense. Thank you. Okay, that's it. Now, we're gonna go into item three, Briefings and Presentation. Item three A is Briefing Update on Outdoor Warning Sirens Systems. I think we'd have Sanchez and Chief Conley.
Chief Kenealy is spread on the corner.
And he's in the corner.
Do you need a timeout?
No.
I had them both, the staff report, she had them both.
He's here for emotional support.
All right, well, I couldn't get that.
Absolutely. Always gotta support my first half.
No, no, yeah, yes, it's, it's, Sanchez is doing the presentation tonight, so.
Sure can handle.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Lauren Sanchez. I serve as your Regional Emergency Management Coordinator for the four cities, so serve Cedar Hill, Duncanville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. And tonight I'm here to give you an update on the Duncanville Outdoor Warning Sirens. Progress to me is a good thing, so tonight I have a good update for you on the progress we're making on the sirens. So, to give you just a little bit of background, and I apologize that that formatting got messed up here for you. These are the, the outdoor warning sirens in the city of Duncanville, so we have a total of eight sites. They're placed strategically throughout the city, so that when they sound, there is coverage that covers our area. They were, they were originally installed in the nineteen nineties. Those systems were in place and then taken down and replaced with new poles, new system, new activation system. In twenty fourteen, we are still operating today on the twenty fourteen system, so going on eleven years. So, they're dated. They, they weather, they sit in the weather all the time, the sun is beating down on them, they've gone through many storms, we've activated them for many storms. So, they are exposed to the elements. The criteria for activation, so we're constantly monitoring weather, we know that severe weather is our most prevalent threat with where we're located in North Central Texas, so when we watch the weather, this is what we're looking for to activate the sirens. It is a tornado warning affecting the city of Duncanville, hail an inch and a quarter in diameter or greater. That's large enough to hit you in the head and cause some damage, and we don't want that if you're outside. Sustained wind speeds seventy miles an hour or greater, or another emergency is deemed necessary by the city. So, for example, if there was a chemical spill affecting a neighborhood and we needed to alert those people very quickly, that something was going on, that they needed to go inside, then we could sound the sirens for that, so it's not just weather, but typically for weather. We do test them the first Wednesday of every month at two P M, which that'll actually fall tomorrow. So, for anyone that has never heard them, you can step outside at two P M, listen. I tell people with kids to do that in the summer, to train kids growing up, that that's what you need to listen for. Outdoor warning sirens are to do just that, is to notify people who are outdoors that something dangerous is occurring, and so they need to go indoors, so seek shelter, number one. And then, number two, find out why they're going on. And so, if we activate them for something other than weather, then we'll definitely follow that up with an alert to the public in our Everbridge system to tell them what's happening.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Are there any, we've mentioned, even the kids, so with the schools, do they have any special training protocol that they do if they're out at recess or something? It's two o'clock P M, well, because it would be a recess.
Or a test?
Yeah.
So, the schools are aware, the schools are aware that we test, we keep it the same every single month for years, so they know that if it's sounding at that time. The other thing that we do specifically for the test that I forgot to mention is we only test on clear days. So, tomorrow, if a storm were to come through, we're just dark clouds, we're not gonna sound. We don't want people to hear it during a test, look outside, see something dark, and then think it's real, so we'll cancel it. But if it isn't time other than Wednesday at two P M, then we tell people to treat it as the real thing. But we do work closely with the school, so they know that that's when we sound. And this is consistent of four, across our four cities, so all four cities are activating at the exact same time. City of Dallas is a little different, so those on, in Duncanville, close to the Dallas border, hear their test at noon on Wednesdays and sometimes get confused. But the first Wednesday of every month is siren test day for everybody in D F W. So, the reason that I'm here today is we've noticed that our sirens are aging and they're, they're having some problems with the eight that we have. We need to update them, replace batteries, they're not spinning the way that they should be, and so we got together and said we need to have someone come out and tell us what is wrong with them. So, we did just that, we got with city management and got some funds approved to bring in Goddard Enterprises, who has experienced servicing our sirens in the past. They came out and did a full inspection on September eleventh and provided us detailed reports. So, I have a very large P D F for every siren site with photos and details of everything that they found, in addition to what needs to be fixed. If it was a battery that needs to be replaced in one site, they notated that. Our sirens also operate on a radio system, so that they can talk to each other and our activation site to actually sound. So, we have a separate vendor that maintains our radios in the sirens, they came out, also did inspection, and gave us a full report of what they were seeing. So, the three of us, the fire department and these two vendors, got together and put together what we're calling a siren repair work plan. So, I asked what needs to be fixed right now to get all eight sirens up to full operation, how much is that gonna cost? And what's the timeline of what that looks like? And so, this is a breakdown of the costs. I try to just condense all that report for you to make it easy to digest. But you can see replacing batteries, antennas, a lock, a control board, a cabinet, et cetera. In Siren Eight, the way that that one is situated doesn't talk well to our repeater, so they wanna put a cellular setup in there. So, in addition to the radio talking to activate it, there's a cell system in there through cell waves that'll also activate as a backup. We also have labor hours for those two vendors to come out, do all the fixes, do all the testing on the sirens themselves and the radios. And that comes out to a total cost of twenty seven thousand six hundred and eight dollars and sixty five cents. Here's our work plan, so the first two have already been completed. So, next up, the fire department got with city management and fiscal services to identify those funds in the budget now to make the repairs, because we want the sirens to operate when we need them. We were able to find the funding, sorry, forget to breathe. We were able to find the funding, and so now we're working with getting a P O issued, and as soon as that P O is issued, then Goddard Enterprises has promised, verified, that they can come in and complete that work within two weeks. They're gonna make our system a priority because it's having issues, and we don't want it to have issues if we need to activate for an actual emergency. And then, once they complete their work, then Goddard will come back out with our siren vendor to fix, or do the testing and fix any issues with the radios. And the city will get together with them, complete the full testing, and then at that point, our siren system will be back up and fully operational. Future costs, looking ahead now, so with Siren Eight, if we put in the cellular setup, which we do intend to do, there is a reoccurring annual fee of two hundred and sixteen dollars just to pay for the cell service. There's also an annual maintenance contract that we would like to implement for preventative maintenance, so we just keep that with the vendor that can come in every year, touch every single site, run updates on the system at the siren, and also at our activation points. Let us know if any batteries are starting to fail, so we can plan to get those replaced, et cetera. And then, we will have to budget funds for those types of siren repairs, the batteries, the motorhead, getting old and having to be replaced, et cetera. So, at a minimum, we're looking at about forty three hundred dollars annually to budget for. Probably with a couple thousand extra just to have for the batteries and the small things that need to be replaced. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Back on the first slide thirteen, you had mentioned other things other than that were on the list, namely a chemical spill. The sirens no longer have a, or do they have an ability to send a message out?
The voice notifications? No, they don't.
So, that being the case, if there were a chemical spill and people knew there was a storm coming in, their inclination would be to go outside. Is there some connection that could be made to go to a, a site on our website where they might be able to identify what the sirens are going off for?
Yes, we could set that up. The other thing that we will do is use our Everbridge system, so that's our mass notification system that we have in the city. So, we encourage every resident to sign up for that, and as soon as we hit the sirens, I can go in there and type up exactly why we're sounding them, hit send, so everyone will get that notification on their phone, and then we could add redundancy of training people to go to the city website, and we can have a page.
With that, I'd ask what percentage of our, what's the percentage of people that are signed up for Everbridge?
Not as many as I would like, but I should have mentioned, we did just get approval, and then we're now called an I pause sending city. So, through our Everbridge system, for something that needs this level of emergency, we can send an I pause alert, which will go to every single cellphone in the city. So, similar to how like the president has his alerts that go through our phones, they do the test a couple, every couple of years, the state has that system for like missing and blue alerts. The city of Duncanville now has that ability, but it's for, right, very specific emergency situations. But if it is a chemical spill, we need people to take action, that meets that criteria. We just got it, we've never sent one, and knock on wood, we never have to send one, but we do have the ability. Kevin and I are both the senders, and we have to send a practice every month.
Yeah, so that, to that point, being that I twenty is a hazardous highway.
Yes.
A hazardous product highway, increases our odds we can, we can actually have that happen.
Correct, yeah, and now we have a backup to the backup of notifying everybody, which is good.
That is good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Do you want more?
I was just gonna point out too, one thing that we also did talk to Lauren, Kevin, and Chief Kenealy, and I really appreciate all their work on getting this up to speed and making sure we have that annual maintenance going forward, but, you know, these sirens last about fifteen years, it's after the presentation, the last time was twenty fourteen. So, not today, but we do need to start planning here in the next couple of years on a replacement schedule and making sure we're, you know, say, they do, they, they do have a finite lives. Just another thing I wanted to add, that's something we're gonna have to have on our radar.
Yes, sir, and I have some numbers, but we can put together a future presentation to come back and talk to you of planning for the future replacement.
Yes, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good, good information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next briefing, next presentation, item three B, Brief Council on Changing Uniform and Uniform Accessory Purchases to Galls L L C.
Up here out of nowhere.
Announced your entrance.
Let's go to the big show.
Runway, mom.
Okay, I'm Ron Wood, I'm with the city chief, Aggelo Police Department. Greetings, Council, Mayor, City Manager. So, what I'm here to do is brief you all on the transition to Galls from Got You Covered. Typically, the fire department and the police department, we use the same uniform vendors. And in twenty twenty three, we went from Galls to Got You Covered. But due to not receiving the quality of work that we needed, we're deciding to go back to Galls. Now, Galls have addressed some of the issues that we had with them before, so we imagine that going back to Galls would be much better this time. Plus, they're implementing something that's gonna be new for us, or they have something that's gonna be new for us. And some of the benefits to this is the location, better tracking, it's gonna be more cost effective, and fewer billing issues. Now, you see that I put the use of portal on several of those, that's gonna be new for us. So, basically, that's gonna allow us to track, you know, what the officers are getting, how fast they're going through this stuff. And each officer will have their own individual account, so that should make things a lot easier for them. So, now they won't have to go through these extra steps in the process of going to training personnel, getting a paper, filling it out, getting it back to them whenever they're in office, and them getting it to the uniform shop. So, I imagine the firemen and the police officers will be excited about this. Let's talk about budget. There are no changes to the budget. Start the conversation. And the contract, so of course, we'll be purchasing the uniforms through Galls. And of course, they're piggybacking through texture off the North Central Texas Council of Government. And as long as they have that relationship, we'll keep using them, as long as they're providing us good service, so still get competitive pricing and everything will be good. Anybody have any questions? No questions, makes us, all right.
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item three C, Briefing Presentation to Provide an Update on the Solid Waste and Recycling Procurement Project. Assistant City Manager Roush.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Roush, Assistant City Manager for Committee Services. So, tonight, we just wanted to provide you with an update on where things stand with respect to the possible bidding out of solid waste and recycling. with respect to the possible bidding out of solid waste and recycling collection services for the city. You might recall that the current contract was executed back in 2019. It was a seven-year agreement with Republic Services. Republic's actually with us tonight, we appreciate Christie Green joining us. And then, you might recall earlier this year, we, we actually went through a road car pilot program in two different neighborhoods in the city, Forest Hills and Greenway Estates. And that, that three-month process was completed back in, in July. And we had pretty positive feedback that came as a result of that pilot program. And then, in early September, City Manager Abernathy actually provided a briefing to you all on the results of that, of that pilot program, and then some next steps for going out to bid at that time. And so tonight, we wanted to just provide you with a further update, looking at some additional options. So as a reminder, our current service, as you see here, basically involves solid waste pickup twice a week in bags. And then, recycling is done once a week, utilizing eighteen-gallon bins. And then, as far as brush and bulk, that collection is done twice a month with the ten-cubic-yard collection limit. Although, if you, if you need additional pickup, you can certainly, you know, make that request to Republic for an additional fee. And then, lastly, we do have some additional supplemental services for some of our senior and disabled residents in the community. So in terms of options for consideration, first, I wanted to just point out again that our current contract with Republic does expire at the end of September 2026, just under a year from now. But then, our current landfill disposal contract with the Skyline Landfill, it actually expires a year later at the end of September 2027. So option one, which is essentially what Mr. Abernathy presented back on September second, involves initiating a new bidding process now for just solid waste and recycling collection services. That, that service would start beginning October first of, of 2026, under that scenario, with the bidding process getting started here in a couple of months in, in January, just after the new year. Under that scenario, the current disposal process with Skyline Landfill would continue. And then, that would be rebid a year later in the Septen, in, in, in 2027, so that it's ready to go in, in October of 2027. So under option two, which, which is the new option that we're bringing before you tonight, we would essentially extend the current contract, terms, costs with Republic Services for one additional year so that we can have it mirrored with the expiration of the, the current landfill contract at Skyline. Under this scenario, the bidding process would start roughly eight months later in August of 2026, so that we have a new provider in place, ready to go for what we're calling turnkey services for solid waste collection, recycling collection, as well as disposal services, beginning in October of, of 2027. So in terms of some of the input that we've received and talking to different consultants in the solid waste industry, we think it makes sense to go with, with option two, which would be the one-year amendment with Republic Services to continue operations as, as they've currently been. We would then look to hire a third-party consultant that would, that would work to, to shepherd us through the entire bidding process for solid waste, recycling, and disposal services. And we would expect them to, to do so in a manner that helps us maximize, you know, the best value for, for the city. We would launch that process in August of 2026. And there are a few benefits to this approach, this option-two approach. One of those, you know, is that it provides more lead time to the selected contractor for purchasing equipment. And then, secondly, it, it allows us to, you know, better evaluate best price and services for multiple proposers, looking at all three services together, not just solid waste and recycling collection and then separate lead disposal. We're, we're packaging it all together, and we think we can get some economies of scale utilizing that approach. Through this bidding process, we would, we would certainly look at all the different service options, you know, one time, one, one collection a week versus twice-a-week service, carts versus still utilizing bags, and then also looking at alley and group side pickup, pickup options. So with that, you know, we're happy to entertain any, with any questions that you might have on this approach. I, I will say that we've had some conversations with Republic, and we are prepared to, you know, they're amenable to the terms and extending the contract for an additional year. We're, we're prepared to bring a contract amendment to you at your next council meeting on November eighteenth.
Let's go.
So if we extend the current contract for one year, would there be like any, like rate increases just for that one year? Any additional expenses for one year's?
No, we would hold, we would hold costs and, and terms, you know, static as, as they are currently.
And then, do we know what expense we would incur for hiring the consultant at this point?
We, we have looked at, at some different options.
Yeah, we got three proposals, and so it'd be about thirty-five thousand dollars. That's just to do the full analysis, helping us with the bidding, again, the analysis afterwards. And that's actually, we looked at three companies and it ranged from thirty-five all the way up to fifty. But the one that we like, that we, we thought was good is a company called Solid Waste Specialists. They're, they've been doing this for a long time, have a lot of injury knowledge. But I think when you're looking at a three-million-dollar or two, oh, two-to-three-million-dollar a year, you know, contract, I think that's a, that's a, that's a cost well worth it, because they have that industry expert, experts. I mean, they'll also kinda answer the question, you know, like I think you asked last time, they'll actually help us develop the contract template that really is fair to the city, and that'll be part of the bid process too. So we'll make sure that upfront, these companies know these are our terms and conditions if you wanna do business with us. But yeah, it'd be about the thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand dollar range.
Yes, sir, on the, on your last slide, it talked about bags versus roller, so that would be...
Those would be options that, that, that could be considered as part of the, the bidding environment. We could dictate that to...
Except for one year or just the entire contract?
This, this assumes under the, under the new contract. We'll, we'll, we'll ask, we'll ask proposers to give us your pricing for a cart option versus a bag option. We, we know some companies out there really aren't doing the bag option anymore, but we will, we will at least ask. But under the current one-year amendment with Republic, you know, all terms would continue as is, so bags would, would be picked up.
And that's something we talked about the September sec, second briefing that I did. We want to make sure that, gotta look at all those options again. As he said, there are some companies that are, they say they're getting out of that business and they may not bid on bags, but at least we see that option, what that price looks like.
And that's all that is, is just see what the price looks like. There's no change, no proposed changes by going in option two?
Yeah, there, there's, as far as option two goes for tonight, when we got to bid, we were just gonna, when we actually officially got to bid, we'll ask for prices for, if you offer bag service, what would that, that annual price be, you know, that rate? But also for carts once a week and twice, we just wanna get a menu of options. But for this, there's no real change. We're extending the contract for one year, and we would, instead of bidding out in January this year, we bid out in August of twenty, I mean, bid out in twenty twenty-six, it'll be August of twenty twenty-six. And they also gives you more lead time for equipment. One thing too, I wanted to point out, sorry, Mark, I'm jumping in here. Remember also, we're gonna bid out the commercial franchise as well. Those companies also, depending whether it's Republic or somebody else, those companies need to leave time to provide those businesses new dumpsters too. And so we wanna make sure those are nice, clean-looking dumpsters for our businesses, and they don't, they're not rushed to make that happen. So that's another point I just wanted to mention, sorry, Mark.
No, you're good.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're up.
Thank you.
Uh, no.
Yes, sir.
All right, briefing, item D, briefing on Armstrong Park signage proposal.
Sure, thank you. All right, so again, Mark Roush, Assistant City Manager, Community Services. Tonight, we wanted to provide you with an update on some additional options for Armstrong Park signage. You might recall, back on August fifth, we had a, a briefing item talking about one particular signage option for Armstrong Park. And based on some of the feedback we got there, and then subsequently, we went back to the drawing board to come up with, you know, some of the different options for Armstrong Park signage. And so ultimately, you know, with, with what you're gonna see tonight, our goal was to, to essentially create more of a signature look for Armstrong Park. It is our signature park here in the city. And, you know, we, we definitely wanna look at ways that we can bring more attention to it. And we think it is a crown jewel in the best southwest. And with some of the options that we're looking at here tonight, I think that helps, helps get us closer to that. Also, we wanna look at ways to develop more of a sense of place for Armstrong Park. And then even look for some ways where, you know, citizens and neighbors alike can, can actually interact with, with the signage. And you'll see some examples of that tonight. So this first slide just illustrates some of the more traditional signage examples. And the, the one on the top left, that's, that's the rendering that you saw back on August fifth. Some of the other options that you see here, you know, they're, they're static in nature, but they do utilize different, different media, whether it be masonry, materials, metal, wood, and so forth. You can even see in the lower left, there's a, there's a LED sign that's embedded in that particular park sign there for Olander Park. But these are, these are more or less just kinda your traditional, you know, static-type park signage. So with what we're looking, gonna share with you tonight, you know, we're, we're, we're thinking that we could utilize, you know, letters, for example, that, that represent more of a, you know, maybe tie back to the historic or cultural aspect of, of the city of Duncanville as well as Armstrong Park. Also, looking at different, you know, types of letters, you know, here it says abstract letters, but you know, looking at colors and, and materials and, and just, you know, maybe creating more of a sculpture garden-type atmosphere where each, each particular letter is, is its own, you know, piece of art. And again, just looking at ways to generate more and more visits to the park from our citizens as well as tourists. And they can, you know, we can create a park that people are proud of and they wanna take pictures with their family. I'm sure everybody's been to Clyde Warren downtown and, and you see a lot of that, where people go there specifically to take family pictures, portraits, and so forth. And so we think through this, you know, we can get ourselves closer to developing more of an iconic sense of place here in the city of Duncanville. Go back, yes, thank you. So this is, again, this, these are just examples here tonight. But this, this is looking at the northwest corner of Armstrong Park. And you can see the different, different letter sizes, different colors, different, you know, materials that you could look at. And you could arrange them in such a way that, you know, you create that sculpture garden-type, type look. We could even, you know, piggyback this with, with entrance signage still, you know, maybe utilizing some of those more traditional signage examples that you saw on the earlier slide that could be situated at, at park entrances. But in this corner of the park, you know, one school of thought was, we could, we could look at some different options here to, you know, create more of an interactive look to, to the park and give, you know, kind of a sculpture garden-type, type appearance. On the next slide, these are just, you know, some different, you know, signs that, you know, you could sit in them, like the lower left there, you know, the letter O there, it looks, you know, like something where, you know, you could curl up and read a book or, or be on your phone or just, you know, relax during the day. And, and then, you've got other examples that are, that are lighted or, you know, other, other pieces that, you know, kids can crawl on and, and play while they're at the park. And so, again, these are just some examples of looking at different, different ways we can treat signage for Armstrong Park. Now, in terms of a, a possible path forward, you know, there's several things that we could look at doing. Number one, obviously, we wanna get, engage the public and get their thoughts on, on what they want for the future of Armstrong Park, especially as it relates to signage. We could also look at, at identifying potential funding solutions, because, you know, what's being illustrated tonight in these more interactive examples is, is more expensive than just your typical ten-or-fifteen-thousand-dollar, you know, traditional park signage. So we could look at ways to maybe get, get various corporate sponsorships. Her, her Republic might be interested in, did that, I'm kidding. But, you know, we've got some examples there of just, you know, different corporate sponsors that we could, we could potentially work with. Also, we have our hot funds, which, you know, because of the tourism that, that we believe this could generate, utilizing hot funds is a, is a legitimate purpose for those dollars. And then, you know, if there's really an appetite for this and we, and we feel like we, we've got the, the funding options nailed down, then we could go ahead and, and hire a landscape architect that could, you know, develop a plan for us, not just the interactive, you know, whether you call it a sculpture garden approach or, or what have you. But we could also have them help us design some of the, the typical traditional signage as well. And then, we would certainly need to know upfront what those capital cars, costs are for those signs. But also, we would need to know what the longer-term maintenance costs are. Because in some of those examples, if you've got lighted signage, you know, there's a, a maintenance piece that comes with that. And then, as part of that process, we would work with different boards, you know, and the public, you know, to make sure that everybody's on board, so that would involve different stakeholder groups like Parks and Rec Board, the Arts Commission, as well as obviously City Council. And then, at that point, if we got the green light, then we would move into final design and, and construction. So really, tonight, we just kinda wanna get, get your thoughts. You know, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but just wanted to present this as, as some additional options to consider to see if, if this is a pathway that you, you would like for us to, to, to go down and, 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 and get more details and bring those back to you as well as the public. So with that, be happy to, any questions you might have?
Mr. Stevenson, you might know this might be a Tyler question. But they also made a submission or application for it to be, to know it's a legacy park. Do you know if there's any updates or...
The Texas Parks and Wildlife, they have a program called Legacy Parks, and you have to be a park that's fifty years old and has some significance to your city. We did apply for that last year, we did not win that award last year, but we will be submitting again.
And Mr. Roush, would you share, because we had TML and I got to kinda go with you, would you kinda share what your background is?
Oh, yes, sir. So, you know, just in, in my previous life, you know, I was involved in different, you know, parks and, and, and trail-type, type projects and, and as well as bridge designs and so forth. And, you know, a lot of those efforts involved a lot of public outreach and, and, you know, trying to build consensus. And in a few of those cases, it involved, you know, fundraising and, and looking for, for sponsorships as well. And so, you know, I, I think, again, Armstrong Parks are a, a crown jewel, and I, I think that's, that's, it's really one of the highlights of, of the city of Duncanville. You know, I think this is a way that, you know, it could, it could take us to the next level if, if this is something that we wanna pursue here in the city.
So, you know, there was a couple of words that were in the staff report, so distinctive and iconic was in there. The destination, you know, signature, all, all these things referring to something that's very unique to us. And, you know, we look at the, the traditional signs that we saw before, you know, we, you know, this is one of those opportunities that we have to, to do things, you know, kind of in a basic, traditional way or go in our own way. You know, come up with our own design, get, get our citizens, Parks Board, Arts Commission involved, and really come up with something unique. And as far as with the interactive component, I know a lot of times with, with signs and, uh, maybe if it's in the park, but it's not a piece of playground equipment, a lot of times we're scared that, because, you know, if my kids see it, they're gonna be on top of it, they can get access to it. And so this would be something that would be designed deliberately for people to, to interact with, to play on, to sit in. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a symbol, we have, we have our multicultural, or our cultural district now. You know, and it, this will be kind of a symbol of, you know, the direction that we're looking at going in, especially having passed our comprehensive plan. So, you know, I'd, I'd be very excited to see how we can move this forward. And as far as funding, so, you know, Republic's in the room, but we've got Encore, Atmos, BNSF. The more money they give, the bigger their logo is on where we put that information. And I also like the idea of using each letter to, to represent some aspect of the city's history or culture. It's just a lot of things that this can be. And with, with the expense, and we do have some, some funding, you know, for arts projects now. This is also a hotel occupancy tax project, because it's something that brings in tourists. So, and, and I was gonna ask, Mr. Stevenson, so the, the sign that we saw before, was there, were there any funds associated with that when it was presented to us?
No, we're not.
Okay, so it was just...
It was a proposal at this point.
Okay. And then, the money we got from Joe V's, is that, has that been assigned to anything?
It has been specifically assigned, it's not been specifically assigned to anything. However, I think it was kinda generally thought we use it for the maintenance, the splash pack.
That money is paid out over a number of years?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
Yeah, we've got the different funding options that are available, so.
He needs to know if you can move in this direction, you have my support.
Is that what y'all are looking for, is consensus?
We're the ones that gets the feedback, yes, on where y'all like to go with this.
I almost don't have to ask, I see a lot of bob in hand, so. I almost don't have to ask. I see a lot of bob in hand, so.
Just, so the, the location of it is when you go down James Collins Boulevard, you're going in off, right off to your right, there's kind of a mound, it's kind of dead space. There's a little bit of landscaping there. You know, I noticed like with voting today, there's tons of traffic on James Collins Boulevard. During events, we have our food trucks out there in the parking lots, so kids can run over and play on the letters. And so, but that was just one location, so, but, I mean, there could be other locations where it might be. But as far as for the community and seeing it continuously, you know, that would probably be one of the best locations.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, that ends those presentations for item three. We're not going to recess from a regular session and move into the executive session. So we're going to recess at six forty-one.
Okay, welcome this evening. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular session for our meeting on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 at 7:29 PM. As usual, I'm going to ask for your forgiveness on the late starting of our meeting here, but we had some more important business that we had to attend to in executive session, ran over a little bit. With that, we'll get started with our invocation tonight. Pastor Guerrero could not make it tonight, so Councilman Vera Cruz is going to stand in and do our invocation for us. Vera Cruz? Please join us.
All right, let us pray. Father, in your mighty name, I just thank you, Lord, that we have options and we have the opportunity for elections, and I thank you for that today, Lord. I thank you also, Lord, for just giving us the responsibility to steward all these blessings and great gifts you give us, but then we also get to debate and decide the way we want to use them. Lord, we know that Veterans Day is right around the corner, so I definitely want to highlight our veterans, also recognize our current serving members, but not only them, but their families, as most of the times they're separated, a lot of things have to happen. Lord bless Duncanville, bless our council, our department directors, employees, in your mighty name I pray, amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledges to our flags. Thank you. All right, we'll get into our reports now, item four, mayor's report. I hope everybody got to get out and vote. This particular election was very important. I know there were a lot of complicated issues, but it's so important that we vote. I'm going to imagine everybody in this room, because you're here tonight, voted, but there's a lot of folks that we see, whether it's the may elections or whether it's a special election like this, that aren't voting, that are registered to vote and vote in larger elections, state and federal. So I want to commend everybody for participating in this election. It's a special option that we have in this country. Secondly, and I'll be short on this, we, all of us attended the Texas Municipal League held in Fort Worth this past week. It was three days of seminars and fellowship and just a good time to get good information from all types of people and all types of backgrounds, representing government, representing specialty type of training on leadership or legislative updates. And it's just something that's very powerful and brings together so many cities in the state of Texas. We come together and we have good times together, a lot of exchanged ideas over what's going on in our cities, what's going on in their cities, and it's combined with some meals that we share together in the evenings that some of the sponsors put on. And one of the big items that everybody enjoys is the vendors that are there. They cover absolutely anything you can imagine that has to do with the city, from garbage trucks, and they pull them in and you get to see full-on garbage trucks, EMS trucks, in every facet of what cities need to operate, these vendors are there. And we make a lot of, we make a lot of good contacts. As a matter of fact, it was a result of TML last year that we got the consultants who are so successfully operating our library today. So I thank everybody for allowing us to have the opportunity to participate in these, this type of an event, because it is very important, and I thank everybody on the council for being involved. Move on to council member reports. Councilman Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with TML, and it is a quality event that does, as the mayor mentioned, but also want to thank our staff for Boobash, the outstanding event at the Field House and that, but also further on the team, the police department did Boo with the Blue, and it was a very well-attended event as well. The Texas Municipal League, I'm going to go back to it real quick, because there are things that really involve cities and how we really can work together and advocate. The good news is, I will say, that the city of Duncanville is in pretty good shape compared to other cities and stuff. I want to congratulate Kim and Jenny's for their grand opening, which started also, that was on this past Saturday, opened up wonderful new location. Also, I saw them wandering around here for a second, oh, right in the back there, our city attorney, Bob Hager, had a birthday this past weekend, you know, one more. And then Mr. Pennerbaker, I think you had one yesterday, is that right? Okay. Congratulations for you guys and stuff, so. But, you know, this upcoming weekend, KDB has an Arbor Day event going on in the morning, and then later on at Armstrong Park, there's a Veterans Day event. On the 12th, Charlton, Methodist, Methodist Charlton has their 50th anniversary, and it's been a, you know, a hospital here has been an integral part of this community. On Saturday, November 22nd, the Lions Club has their pancake breakfast. It's five bucks. You can't eat for any better price than that, but also that same day, KDB is having a pumpkin recycling event. And Friday, December 5th, is our Christmas tree, you know, Christmas celebration and that stuff. Then on Monday, December 8th, is the Master's Voice Concert at First Christian Church, excellent vocal quartet there. And then Saturday, the 13th of December, is Cookies with Santa. So there's a lot of good things going on. I'll always remind you, you can see it on the website, and just know that Duncanville is doing things.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City of Champions. On a serious note, I build my campaign and number of things based on accountability, transparency, and building trust. And along those lines, I would like to acknowledge some things that have come to my attention on, some citizens feel that the council could have done a better job on educating the public about the items that's on the ballot for tonight, as far as our charter amendment. With that said, I believe in taking accountability and earning your trust, and so if you feel that we didn't educate enough, I want to apologize and say that we are, it wasn't our intention to do anything nefarious. It wasn't our intention to leave you uneducated, unaware. We did have public comments, we did have public discussions, I should say, and we also offered a town hall. But there were still some who were not aware of the items that would be on the ballot for tonight, and with that, my sincerest apologies for dropping the ball. I am open to hearing alternatives in how we can communicate better. What are some options that you feel that are lacking in our form of communicating? Anything that is of significance to our city, because we're here to represent you, we're here to listen and to advocate for the things that you want to see here in your city. So with that said, again, my apologies. I am sorry for letting you down in this area, and that is not something that I intend on doing moving forward. But I do want to speak on behalf of this council, it was not our intention for us to have filled you possibly in this way. So with that said, thank you, and please feel free to reach out to me, any of your other council members, and let us know in ways that you feel like we can step up in improving our communication. You can also reach our interim city manager and inform the staff of an avenue of communicating you think would best serve you. So with that said, I'll end it with that tonight. I just wanted to acknowledge and let you know that that was not our intention, and we apologize for not informing you enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no further council comments, so we will move on to proclamations and presentations, and we'll start with item A proclamation. No matter how many times they tell me, I forgot something pretty important, and I apologize for that. Since we're apologizing tonight, I'll apologize for that, because I just got a little ahead of myself. City manager's report. So with that, Mr. Abernathy.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. I've just got a couple of items. I just want to remind again that we did, we did get the updated comp plan document posted online, as I mentioned previously. We did, we did get all the steering committee photos on there. I appreciate our team, Aleah Murray in our office for working with the steering committee to get those photos. We thank Mr. Elias Rodriguez and Ms. Sarah Masius for coming up and getting some pictures so we could get that in there. We've uploaded those now, and we'll be printing those documents off for council here pretty quickly, so y'all- have your hard copy. So we, we are glad to have that, that done. Just a quick housekeeping items. At the last meeting, we did talk about making some changes to boards and commissions that we briefed you on. So we talked about multicultural committee transition to community engagement, and then having the ZBA also do the sign, sign ordinance. We will be bringing that to you on December 16th, just due to, you know, workload with the Attorney's Office, getting those ordinances in. And then also, the two alternate members for the PNZ board, that will require us to go back to PNZ to do public hearings as part of the zoning code. So we plan to bring that to PNZ in December with the public hearing, and then we'll come back to council in January with the public hearing and recommendation for final approval. Just one other, two items. I would like to introduce Aleah Murray, who I mentioned earlier, if you want to stand up. Aleah recently joined city administration as our executive liaison. She's been a very big help to both Mark, myself, and Angel and our team. Aleah originates from Cleveland, Ohio. She has a background in both the private sector as well as in housing and community development, working in the Cleveland area. And she, she's pursuing her degree at Purdue University. And she joined the city in April of 2025 as an intern for the Economic Development Department. And then she's been helping us out, kind of in an interim role for a while in September, but we're just very happy to have her on board with us. And so I just wanted to introduce her and welcome her aboard officially. And then just one last note, I do have a picture here. We did have our employee Halloween pizza party on Friday. We saw a lot of creative costumes, as you can see from that picture. And again, just once again, just an opportunity for our employees to get together and just, just show appreciation for everything they do, and just give them a chance to have a little fun at work. And so I just wanted to share that with the city council. And again, it was, it was a successful event, and we do thank our Human Resources Department for, for organizing the event. And that concludes, concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, apologies for skipping over you. Okay, move on to item five, proclamations and presentations. And first item A proclamation for Texas Arbor Day 2025.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Tyler Agi, Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation, dedicating the proclamation for Arbor Day from the city of Duncanville. So in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Tree Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. This holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. While trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, provide food in human consumption, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. Trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of youth and spiritual renewal, and the city of Duncanville has earned the rank of Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for the 26th consecutive year. Now, therefore, Greg Contreras, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 7th, 2025, as Arbor Day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Item 5B, Economic Development Department Quarterly Report. And we have Victor, Mr. Barrera, and Mr. Harvey. Are you going to be presenting as well?
He will, and thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Secretary, City Attorney, and City Manager. This evening, it is a pleasure to present to you, and really an honor to present to you, the department's quarterly update. The last time that I was here was back in June, and I'd stated that I was really trying to consolidate and, and really make the presentation of all our economic development activities and initiatives, short and sweet and to the point. But I find myself struggling with telling the whole story and keeping it concise, because I find myself having to put together slides with pictures and numbers and anything to really put into context some of the work that we've been doing and some of the things that we've accomplished, as well as some of the things that we're looking to accomplish and the conversations that we've been having. So that said, I would say this, this presentation is a bit different from the last one in that, yes, it has some words on there, it has some pictures, but it also has some video that I'd like you to see that really tells the story of some of our efforts and the story behind some of our champion businesses and so forth. So without further ado, I will provide you our department quarterly report. I'll start off with building stronger partnerships through business visits. So what we have here is an example of a business visit that was conducted by Assistant Director Marlon Goff. He visited 84 Lumber, and he put together a very nice and detailed report of his visit, the impact of, of the business, staff members, revenue, et cetera. And really, this is the direction that we're looking to go with our business, with our business visit, to provide a detailed summary of that interaction. What was the outcome? But, you know, how many employees? What are their needs? What are some of the resources? What connections can we make with other agencies? So again, I just wanted to share this with you as just a snapshot of some of the work that we've been doing and the reports that we've been putting together at the conclusion of our business visits. I'm proud to say and happy to say that last fiscal year, we accomplished over 60 business visits. And when I first arrived to the city, I heard some initial feedback from the business community about there being some disconnect between the business community and city hall. And so I thought it was important to really talk to the individuals behind the business and understand the disconnect and understand where can we have a better relationship with our business community, and how we could put together the necessary resources for this, for their success. And sometimes in talking to them, finding that maybe money isn't the way to help a business. Maybe it's providing them with a right resource for them to put together a business plan, a marketing plan, and maybe that's the more, most effective way of helping them. Not to say that money doesn't help, but sometimes having that conversation in greater detail really gets to the crux of what's going on with the business. But more than anything, it's about establishing relationships with these businesses and that level of trust. And I'm proud to say that through the business, through those visits that we have had, we now are in a situation where we have certain business owners that can confidently and very freely reach out to staff for any needs. And either we can help them, or we can steer them in the right direction. It's just that level of relationship building, collaboration, that we've been working through and we will continue to work through over the next fiscal year. Also share with you that we have committed 60 business visits for this fiscal year for the department thus far. And in month number one, we've accomplished 10% of those, of those 60 business visits. And they're just, honestly, they're just happening that, they're just happening naturally. We had a business visit yesterday that, that even included a city, Assistant City Manager, interim City Manager about business retention and just, again, really good conversations about what's happening with the business, their, their struggles, their growth needs, and really trying to figure out how we can continue the partnership and the collaboration for their success and their growth. So again, lots coming, a lot of good things are coming out of these business visits. And then through that, I will be quite honest with you, that through those conversations, we're hearing about some of their dynamic and interesting stories. Each business, I figure, has a story, and they're all, in my mind, one way or another, a champion in the community, right? They do what they do, and they have a reach. And sometimes we forget about the kind of reach, the kind of impact that they have on the community, and really the reach about how far these businesses are impacting, whether it's workforce development, whether it's a restaurant attracting, attracting individuals from northern Dallas. You just kind of forget about that until you start talking about, until you start talking to these business owners and they start telling you their story. And everyone has a story. So what we decided to do with, as a result of those business visits, is to have and put together what we just, what we now call a Champions at Work series. And really what it is meant to do is, is highlight our champion businesses in the community, but use it as an opportunity to tell their story. Again, every business has a story. Every business has a value in the community, and every business impacts the community one way or another. And so we started this series, and when we put this together, there was quite a bit of conversation about how do we do this, doing something that's sustainable, how often, what are the businesses? And we figured out a plan to a point that we could do a featured business every month. And so we started just a few months ago, and the first one out of the gate was Texas Fades Barber Academy. And we put this video together to just kind of highlight and tell you their story. So there you go. You have an example of a, of a champion business, talking about being a mentor to our youth, helping them put together a business plan, and really be helping them set up to be future champions, if you will. But as I said, it always starts somewhere, right? And in this instance, for this business and this story, it started in Duncanville, right? You're with me? I'm trying to get to the next slides. All right. So thank you. Apologize about that. And then we go to our October, October featured business, Bodega Provisions and the Tamale Company. And here's another, here's another champion business and a very unique story, and, and the story of how they met and the story of how they connected, that connection to Duncanville, the school, the community, and really their struggle through COVID and how they had to adapt their business plan to, to survive. So again, every business has a story, and it's great to have that conversation with them and hear about their story and be able to tell their story to our residents, but really everyone, about the champions that we have in our community. So without further ado, I will share with you the video that we put together for Bodega Provisions.
Hello, Amanda. And I'm Elizabeth. We're the tamale company and bodega provision company. We actually just celebrated our five years anniversary here in Duncanville.
Israel and I met like a little bit over 20 years ago. We both worked at Harvest Cafe. It was on Main Street in downtown Duncanville, so a very small world. Israel's originally from Bearcruz. I'm from the area. We both grew up in Oak Cliff for a lot of our lives, and then we're back in Duncanville, and we are so happy to run this business.
Five years ago, Elizabeth and Israel never imagined running a bodega. Before the pandemic, this was a catering kitchen. But when COVID hit, they faced a choice, close the doors or reimagine the space.
From starting out with just literally turning our desks around to make, make shift counters and refrigerators for little grab-and-go food items.
What began as grab-and-go has grown into much more, from hot lunches and breakfast tacos to an hour of breakfast.
So listen to team, they do an amazing job in the back. They do a lot of research, bring in every item on a Tuesday. On Tuesdays, we have shrimp tacos. They're amazing, and also chicken tacos. And we bring in the beef biblia ramen back for the fall and winter. And, and also we have breakfast tacos on Saturday.
Before the bodega, their business was primarily catering. Now, the shop allows people to experience their food firsthand and encourages visitors to come to Duncanville to taste it themselves.
So before the bodega, we didn't really have a place to, for people to come out, come out and try our food.
So this has been a true gift for people to be able to come to this space. They come all over the metroplex to try this food in Duncanville. And it's been like such a great opportunity for people, not just the tamales, but we have other provisions that we make in-house that we don't even offer during our catering. So it's like a little special thing for people. Once they've tried the tamales, they get to try all the other products we make as well.
But bodega is only part of the story. Their family tamale company has been serving Texas since 2008.
We do catering. We cater tamales all across Texas, like from Dallas all the way to Austin.
Distributing across the state, and now shipping nationwide.
But we also ship everywhere in the US. We not just provide our food in Duncanville or catering, but we also ship, and we ship the tamales and all these unique sauces that we make.
For Israel and Elizabeth, it's more than food. It's community.
We are literally so lucky to have such amazing community here at Bodega. It's amazing how people, and like we are so lucky to have people that eat here every single day for their meals. Like, it blows our mind. It literally blows our mind that people do that every single day. Our late-night events are great. Hundreds of people come out for our late-night events and support us. I mean, we just, it's like literally a dream.
A space inspired by travels to Mexico, built with family and sustained by neighbors who have made it part of their lives. Sometimes, the best reason to visit a city is a corner bodega with unique minds.
So there's another, another story. And again, when we talk to these businesses and have a conversation and then establish a relationship, we get to find out more about who they are, where they came from. And the more we started talking to the businesses, the more we found that it was, it was necessary to advertise, to bark, to share their story and how they've come to where they've come, and, and in some instances, provide feedback, provide lessons learned to those that are thinking about becoming entrepreneurs, or lessons learned through their own struggles. So again, it's been a great journey. The November featured business is Jonesine Custom Embroidery and More. We are working right now on finalizing that, that video. And I say we, but it's not really me. It's Francisco. He's, he's the guy behind all the magic and the eye and just the interviews. So it's truly been a team effort. These could not, not have been done or put together without Francisco's help. So kudos to him and, and his work. So we're finalizing that, that video, and that should be out within the next week. But we're also getting ready for the next video. We're getting ready for December's video, which we're going to feature Kim and, Kim and Jenny's. And so we're going to be there on Friday morning recording, and that will be December's featured business. So again, stay tuned, because there's a series of other videos that are going to come. And once they're completed, we post, post them on all the city's social media outlets. And we have gotten so far some really good feedback about the videos and the businesses. So we've been working on that. At this point in time, I'll take the opportunity to shift over and provide you with some updates on some of the projects that we're working on. What you have before you is a revised site plan for the proposed HTO off of Cockro Hill Road. This site plan was put together as a result of our discovery of a recorded cross-access easement that was revealed when we did a survey of the property, and also discovered that there were recorded covenants and restrictions on the property that required the adjacent owner's approval of the site plan use and overall layout. So again, this site plan that you have in front of you has been revised and approved by HTO's Real Estate Committee. Right now, we are in the works of seeking the adjacent property owner's approval per the recorded. Right now, we are in the works of seeking the adjacent property owner's approval per the recorded covenants and restrictions on the, on the site plan, the building elevations and the use. Once we have obtained that, then we will proceed with, with the closing of the property and then the developer will pursue the necessary approvals from the city. One item that's required for this is a SUP for the drive-through for the proposed HTO. But again, the developer is holding off on that until we are able to secure the adjacent owner's approval on the layouts, user, et cetera, per the recorded covenants. So again, that's already, this plan that you have in front of you has been presented to HTO's Real Estate Committee and they have approved this. These are the proposed building elevations for that project. The toyar site, that is an item of discussion for later this evening. What you have in front of you is a revised concept plan for the sites that has incorporated some landscaping. I've also provided you with a preliminary colored elevation of the, of the building. What we have is an end user that requires approval from the city at this point in time for a specific use permit and approval of replats. We're looking at a phase one investment of approximately 20 to 25 million dollars and a construction timeline of about 18 to 24 months. But again, we'll go into greater detail about this project later this evening as it is an item on the agenda. The credit union and Bojangles, we had a meeting with the developer back in August, what we call a pre-permit submittal to discuss the submittal requirements and the approvals for securing an earth change permit and the authority to put in utilities to a point of delivering a pad to the end user so they can build, build up. Through the course of the investigation period and research, they have found that the development costs have exceeded what they had originally budgeted for. There are some extenuating circumstances with the property that are not normal site development costs that again are attributed to this. As a result, we're having discussions with them about a sales tax sharing agreement in the amount of $150,000. And that is for the extraordinary development cost. At some point in time, in the next 30 to 60 days, this will be coming to you officially for your official consideration and approval. And we're, right now, we're working through the details of that revenue disbursement. And the next step will be a presentation to the Economic Development Corporation for their consideration. Once that's passed there, then we will bring it to, we will bring it to City Council. And Sina, very similar to the other, other development in that we had a DRC pre-submittal, pre-submittal meeting to discuss the permit requirements. And it really is an effort to streamline the permitting process and ultimately the approval of the project to get them going on track. We had a really good meeting with the team, provided some really good input on the preliminary, preliminary plans. The plans were revised based on the preliminary feedback that we had given them. It take, it took the design, design team a little bit longer to revise the plans, but I'm happy to report that we now have the plans and we are in the midst of reviewing the permit for the build out of this space. I will, and I will share with you that there is the possibility with more to come about them needing an extension for the completion of the build outs. The approved agreement had the, had a requirement, if memory serves me correctly, of a completion of May. They're thinking that they might be a bit behind schedule, but we won't know until the permit is issued and they get going with, with the project as to how, how much of an extension they will need. That will be coming to you if needed for your consideration and approval. But just I wanted to put that out there that there is that possibility. 1435 Candlelight Avenue. I had cheered with you that this is a developer who was interested in developing this site. Since my last presentation, the developer has secured the property. The developer has been working with the city, city team on addressing a number of site issues, layouts, turning radiuses with the fire department, but more than anything, has been working with the city on drainage. And as a matter of fact, as recent as this morning, we received the revised drainage plans based on the comments that staff provided to make sure that we're, that we're going in the right direction and that we're now in a position to proceed with the entitlements that will require more than likely a rezoning of the property to get this, to get this property and this project moving forward. Development and redevelopment interest. I had shared with you previously that we had talked, been talking to entities that have expressed some interest in city-owned property, DCDC-owned property, and one that's further along and recent, there was recent action by the DCDC was railroad flats. We have a developer that expressed interest. And interestingly enough, it's the same developer that is proposing the townhomes on candlelight. And that's just how the conversation started, asking about any further development interest, any experience. We presented this property to him as a possibility. They did express interest. We went back and forth for several months, but here recently, we were able to get the DCDC to secu, to approve the purchase sale agreement for this property. There is an economic incentive component to this, to this project, which we will present to you on November 18th for your consideration and approval. These are the proposed building elevations. At this time, they're, the developer is anticipating, based on his experience and his understanding of our drainage requirements through the other townhome development, that the original unit count that we had of 42 proposed is now at approximately 36. Again, based on, based on information regarding our drainage requirements and what is going to be needed on this property, given that it's not been developed at all. And yeah, these are the proposed building elevations. At this point in time, I will, I would like to hand over the presentation to our Assistant Economic Development Director, Marlon Goff, to walk you through the balance of the presentation for the department.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administration and staff. It is going to be with y'all this evening. So I am Marlon Goff, Assistant Director, Economic Development. So this next series of slides will be a companion to what I would say the first part of the presentation that Victor covered. If you look at the economic development budget, right, some of our goals, some of our key performance indicators, what you'll find is a core of activities around business retention, right? Stewardship, cultivation of the local business and the economy that's already here on the ground, right? The other component is business expansion, right? Through those visits, we're looking for opportunities to either those businesses to grow, either onsite or multiple locations. The third category is business attraction, right? And so that's what these next series of slides are going to be categorized as. What does that look like, right? How do we actually fly the banner for Duncanville to attract investment, to submit sites, to generate interest in our local economy, right? Business attraction. Alright, so first up, here's an example of a symposium, a seminar. This organization, the franchise game. This is, was their third year hosting this event. It's held at Young Brands International, right? So that's the multinational corporation, parent company for KFC, Taco Bell, Pizza Hut, right? They're right there in Plano, Texas. But it was less about that particular portfolio of brands. They just opened up their campus, right? Their exhibition hall space to a number of different, we'll say in many cases, competitors, right? Because what they figured out is their supply chain for franchisees is the same, regardless of if they're Taco Bell or if another company's is Cinnabon or Smoothie King or et cetera, right? And so we had an opportunity, an invitation to participate, right, in this trade show. It was a great chance to get in front of those site selectors, those decision makers. But what I learned is really the brands and the restaurant companies, they're looking for the entrepreneurs. Marlin, Victor, team, we, yeah, we're actually interested in Southern Dallas County or Duncanville. But what we need is some business owners, some entrepreneurs, people who have the liquid capital, the bandwidth, the expertise, who are willing to get behind our brand and our model, right? And bring that company, your favorite restaurant, your favorite store that you would like to see. So that's what they're looking for. So that was a good experience. Our colleagues from DeSoto was on the panel as well as Dallas Black Chamber Commerce. So it was a good experience. Here's a couple of photos, just a snapshot of some of those regional multinational brands that were part of that trade show and part of that audience. But some really good intel now to take back, right? A real intimate and data-driven understanding of if we're in front of a local investor or someone who wants to expand their portfolio, we have the science behind what it would take perhaps to get you qualified to bring that brand to our local economy, right? Business attraction. Alright, here's another one, more on the legislative side, but we understand those things also affect our local economy, right? So every year, right, every Friday during the month of August, we have the Legislative Breakfast Series. And it's a competitive sport, but our cities and the best office partnership have more in common than we do, you know, alike. And so this is an opportunity where each of those Fridays, one of the cities get the host or profile. And so here's a snapshot. So if we're doing a photo ID, we got the city council represented. We got the city manager's office. We've got economic development and we also got finance, right? Great photo, good looking group. Okay. Another category, again, our budget, kind of the scope of our department is special events program. Right? We were doing signature events with the city. Part of our staff, Ms. Devon, again, trade shows. How are we learning how to do our events better, right? What can we learn from other communities, vendors in the marketplace? So here's an example of the event. The Dallas Market Hall there by the World Trade Center. Retail Live, again, still business attraction. This event every year in Austin, South Central location. Again, we've got, again, some of the familiar cast of characters, but it's a day trip for one of our staff to go down there to interface the network again, get intelligence, sell our city, our trade market, exploit what opportunities there might be and then bring that back. Again, mixed use. This was a theme that was talked about a lot in the recently adopted comprehensive plan, right? When you think about the built environment in Duncanville, scarcity of land, the opportunity to kind of reimagine how to use existing buildings or the footprint of space, mixed use is kind of this catchphrase. That means a lot of different things, but this particular event in Addison, again, what's really going on with that industry? What is there to be learned? Bring that data back and help inform our strategy to try to attract a mixed use development opportunity where they can be inserted. Okay, we're getting closer to the end, y'all. Appreciate the attention. The website, again, this is another marketing tool for traction, for information that may not require us to be dispatched, right, to a trade show, to an event or a business visit. Some enhancements, again, one of our goals, long time coming, right? We've got a live business directory. But this software that we've recently onboarded, it's much more than just a business directory. For the staff, we know it and find great value in it being this client relationship management tool, CRM, right? They've got other competitors in the space. So if you were to go to our website, as an example, you could see here on maybe one of the links. If my pointer is working, well, the business director. So if you were to click on that link, it would bring you to Blue Dot. That's the name of
of the platform.
You can do a search. If you're good with maps and love looking at things from the sky like I do, you can, you can zero in on it. You want to open that for us? Okay, okay, here's again, example of how you want, if you wanted to interface with it in real time. I can add a business. I can communicate directly with the business. If I come in to visit this afternoon, we've got a new manager or some new intelligence, I can update that, but they can also update it as well, right? And so a good tool, again, I can, I can log prospects and communicate with them directly. We can pull out data, number of businesses that are active, businesses that are closing. Again, a really good tool that we're finding, getting more familiar with, that we're ready to make use of. Alex, I'm gonna bring you back. Alright, thank you, my guy. Again, I mentioned the website. So Victor showed the Texas Fade Barber Academy. That was the one we featured. So it's currently living and live on our website. Here's another feature that we've done maybe early in the year. The community profile, again, when we look at our trade market, how do we look on paper? There's some good household empirical data for people who wanted to see what the opportunities are when I'm trying to evaluate decision on whether or not Duncanville is a good fit for me to make an investment. I can access some really good information. The property search, commercial real estate firm CoStar, again, our developers and site selectors, they can get right to the available inventory, whether it's land or buildings with, that are vacant or improvement. Alright, another upcoming project, hopefully we'll be ready to go by our next quarterly update, Neon Cloud, right? So think instead of the business profile and we're interviewing local businesses or entrepreneur, this tool, lack of a better expression, I'm interviewing the site, right? I'm putting together and with this firm, data information in a graphic format, maybe 3D modeling, helping site selectors, investment developers imagine what might be possible on this vacant parcel, right, or this current land use. Again, as an attraction tool to generate, legitimize the investment opportunity in Duncanville. So again, this product, this work will also live on our website, but then I'll be able to, if I'm not at a trade show, I can send this information with my packet of data or information about a particular site. Okay. We mentioned CoStar and that this is what CoStar looks like on our landing page or our link. Again, an example of existing buildings, whether it's commercial, retail or office. Alright, this is where I end. I want to pause. Now we give you a lot of information before we hand this over to Mr. Harvey. This will actually be the annual report for the DCDC, but I wanted to pause to see if there might be any questions that either myself or Victor can respond and react to. You know, I know that was a lot of information, a quick fly through.
There's a lot of information and I'll start out by telling you how much I appreciate the work that y'all have done. This report is indicative of where this economic development group is taking us that we haven't been. I think I'm safe and sane ever. The, the reaching out to these different organizations to gain access to information that's going to benefit the Duncanville and the surrounding areas is, I think it's critical because we haven't had that, that reaching out. That's created the opportunities that we've been missing for some time. And so I, I'm just, again, I thank you for being innovative and, and being passionate enough to be reaching out to these other entities to improve our economic development efforts in the city. Thank you both. Really do appreciate that. Mr. Penner Baker?
Good evening. Well, thank y'all. That, I concur with the mayor. This is exciting and to see all this happen. I'm just, a couple of quick questions. The Blue Dot, the CRM, how did y'all originally populate that? Was that all manual or is it some interface integration with what we already have?
Thanks for the question. So this is a really cool story about Blue Dot. So we were exploring a handful of vendors. What would be a good for us, fit for us? We know we need a business directory, a business listing. But we also knew we would benefit from having a tool where we could track our own data, keep ourselves organized, communicate directly with the business, manage projects, right? What we discovered is that it's a tool that was previously in use by our predecessor staff. Sad to say unbeknownst to us, but we still zeroed in probably the same things that they were attracted to. And so when we reached out to the vendor, they're like, this is great because we still have all your data and information archived. And so we're essentially renew, renew the contract, update the purchase and so, but they pull from, oh, they're using Google Maps, Esri, a lot of different tools, but it also still allow, allows us to make sure that it's accurate, that, and then we are, we are able to, let's say, a business historically was located, a shop still under a new management or ownership. We're able to go in because we know, okay, this is a new business name owner. We can archive that old listing and just leave the new one active, same address. So a really good tool that we're, we're still discovering. Again, just recently as the fiscal year, we onboarded the system, but I, I found some prospects that, again, previous staff was working on that we're able to pick back up on and reignite.
Thank you. On the CoStar, the LoopNet, as far as commercial properties for sale, lease, however that is looked at, is that only from businesses or realtors that are using that system? Because they're on, on the MLS for the typically residential. A lot of people list under there too. So did we miss any of those listings?
So, good question. So the CoStar is basically the equivalent of, of the residential MLS, if you will. It's just for the commercial purposes. It's, it's a tool that we use that is 95% accurate. Um, it's, it's a tool that we use that is, um, ninety-five percent accurate. Uh, they have a team, they have a team of researchers and investigators to make sure that, uh, the data that's out there is correct and accurate. But in the event that we find a listing that they don't have, we can bring it to their attention, they can look into it, and then they can update their databases. But they have an entire team, um, that scrubs through a bunch of data closings to make sure that, uh, the information that they provide to their users is, is as best and as accurate as possible. Um, I appreciate the question because I had that, that same thought and raised that same question to CoStar about just the accuracy of the data that they provided us, and ninety-five percent is what, um, our representative shared with us as far as, uh, rate.
Okay. And, and we don't have any influence as far as what we can put on there. We couldn't put our city-owned properties on there for-
Yes, we, um, we can as part of our subscription, uh, list city-owned properties. We're right now scrubbing through the list that we have, by trying to identify which properties are buildable. One, two, uh, which properties are residential, and three, which properties are commercial, so that we can sort through those and give them to CoStar to put in their, in their database and advertise that.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's good.
Thank you, Mayor. How do you determine the monthly featured business?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question, and it's, it's a program that just started off. Um, it's one that we, um, try to make sure that the business owner is accessible and willing. We've reached out to some businesses and just have not been able to make that connection or availability. And sometimes, you know, the filming schedule is one that we have to move quickly. Um, but what we're trying to do, because again, this is a very fairly new program, and in the spirit of consistency and fairness, if you will, what we've talked about is putting together a lottery system that we would put together in a database, all the businesses in the city, and then have a computer select the business. Um, but first, we need to know their story, understand the story, so we can then work with the team to tell the story. So that's what we've been discussing as matter of moving forward, how to pick the business, and when we tell the story and how the story is told. Um, but I am impressed with the stories that I've heard and just, again, the impact that these businesses, uh, have on the community and some of their, what I would describe as their trials and tribulations. And you really don't know what they've been through until you talk to them and really have a conversation with them about, as I tell my team, doing life together and understanding how they're doing life, how we're doing life, and how we're doing that life together and how we can possibly collaborate.
Thank you for that answer. Um, there, I know you have a ton of businesses to choose from and a lot of interesting stories. Um, there's a coffee shop that recently opened up here in our city. Um, also sitting on the front row, they have an interesting story as well. So, um, however you determine that, I would ask that you kind of, um, continue down that effort. Also, I look forward to hearing the discussion next month about, um, railroad flats. That seems to be, um, interesting and looking forward to hearing that discussion. So with that, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. A great report. I think, uh, we're gonna get a follow-up here from Mr. Harvey. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Manager, Neighbors, Residents, Friends, et cetera. I, I have these, uh, papers, uh, that, uh, have the presentation on it. And before I, uh, conclude, I do want to say, my name is Patrick Harvey. Uh, I am the, uh, Chairman of the Board. Some would say Board President. Please do me a favor and don't call me that. Uh, Chairman of Board of the Economic Development Corporation. Here's what we've been doing. What we've been doing is working with you all to get a full board of seven members. Uh, we have, uh, a President who is Mia, Vice President who is Durin Voughton. What we have been working on is policies, procedures, practices. Policies, procedures, and practices. Uh, and what we are planning to do in this next fiscal year is implementing the new strategic plan in fiscal year twenty-six, continuing partnerships, uh, with you, the City Council, with the Boards and Commissions, the Arts Commission, for example, the TIF Board, uh, and continue to position staff to build, uh, relationships, uh, in this community that will strengthen and enhance, uh, the business community. I personally look forward, uh, to working with you all and working with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, and the staff so that we can approach our economic development issues from a cohesive and cooperative, uh, standpoint. And we're going to continue to remain focused on accountability, transparency, and impact. That's all I have, thank you. Any questions for me?
No lights on, thank you.
All right, you all can move on to other business, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hamby, you have a presentation for us?
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, City Manager. Ready to talk about some art? Uh, I'm Alex Hamby, Communications and Marketing Administrator for the City of Duncanville. I also am fortunate to serve as the Staff Liaison to the Arts Commission. Tonight, I'm here to introduce the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-twenty-six's Applications and Applicants. Um, the, what we have here is submissions that include public art, art education, and performance, a whole gamut. Um, the first quarter ran from September first to September thirtieth. Uh, the total requested amount was fifty-six thousand dollars. The reason why I put that first is because we had nine applicants, which compares to the first time that we did this, which was fourteen applicants for forty-two thousand. The Arts Commission's bu- current budget is for ninety-five thousand dollars, so we've got that. The Arts Commission did review all of these applications on October tenth and have their, uh, they have made their recommendations, which I'll bring back to you on November eighteenth. And now I will, for applicants who are not here, I'll be covering them in brief, and then for the applicants who are, are here, I'll bring them up. So the first was an application for an event called A Ghetto Child's Christmas Tale, which was submitted by Evidence Theater Productions. The request was for three thousand dollars, and the summary was an urban theater production musical of the Nativity Story. The next is an art mural. For the project summary, I'm gonna go ahead and let the applicant introduce this for you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Abel Castro, and I'm here with my wife Frances. And, uh, many of you know her as Frenchy. Uh, we're the proud owners of Shellabistro. Uh, we're applying for the grant for a 3D mural on the side of our building. This is not just to make Shellabistro more beautiful, but it's also to bring more visitors, attention, and business to Duncanville. Frenchy and I are not just local business owners, but we also live here. Uh, so this is a very special place for us. Uh, this is a place where we want to make ourselves known, and we want to make sure we bring something to the community. So the first thing we always asked was, why not Duncanville, why here? Uh, Frenchy, like I said, um, she's done a lot to the business. A lot of us have looked inside, there's a lot of unique things that she does inside of the, inside that she's done, a lot of artwork. But if you look at the outside of the building, it looks bland, it looks different, it looks like there should be more, something to make somebody stop and take a picture. So what we're requesting to do is to make the outside of our building look more like the inside of the building. We want it to be something where people come from out of state, out of places, take a picture, and really feel who we are. Um, so far, we've had our customers come in from across the city. We've had even people come in from, all the way from Germany to come see us. Uh, so we want to make sure that we continue that trend and push as much as we can to bring those customers here, not only to Frenchy, or not only to Shellabistro, but also to our hotels here, our local businesses, to shop with us, to be here. So that's one of the things that we're asking. We did ask for, um, a, a mount already, but after we were talking to our local artists, it did go up more than what we were thinking of, just for the maintenance and the paint. So that is one thing that we are asking for. Whenever we do turn in our bids, we already asked for three different artists. The amount did go up. Um, so we do ask if possible, there might be more available later on, we would love to do that. Um, but regardless of the amount that you guys, um, if we are approved, we'll make sure that we, uh, do everything possible to make sure that we bring the pride and, and everything to this amazing city. So, um, above everything, we want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity. Um, but we'll make sure that whatever funds we have, we're gonna make sure we do the best with it, and, uh, we'll make sure it's gonna be something that is, uh, bringing more business to Duncanville, not just to us, but to all these other wonderful restaurants and hotels that we have here. So, thank you, guys.
Mr. Coats?
Uh, could, can I ask the, the applicant a question?
Sure.
Good evening, my name is James-
Oh, excuse me, one second, we have a question for the previous speaker. I'm sorry about that.
Um, yeah, tha- thank you for the information. Um, and so y'all, y'all got three bids already, right?
Correct.
Were, were any of the initial bids that you received at or underneath the three thousand dollar-
Yeah, all three of them were above-
They were all above-
Correct.
-the three thousand dollar cap. Okay. Uh, I appreciate that, and I, I just, just a comment as far as, um, you know, as we review our policy and look at, um, you know, the different kinds of grants that we offer, uh, that, you know, we'll notice, especially with the mural projects, that none of the expenses associated with it are, are gonna be under three thousand dollars. So, just, just something to point out as we move forward with our process.
Yeah, and the mural that we're doing also, it's not like a basic two-dimensional mural, it's gonna be a 3D one. Uh, the ones that we are looking at were similar to what you see in New York or LA. There's nothing like that anywhere down south. There's nothing down here that remotely looks something like that. And this is something that Frenchy came out with at three AM and wanted to tell me, hey, this is what we should do to bring more business here. Um, so it's added to the little notepad that we have on the side of her bed, so, um, I'm sure she's gonna come up with a lot more stuff and, 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 you know, great things that we can do for the city. And the, the biggest thing is to bring more attention, more eyes, more income to the city. Like I said, our kids are here. Uh, we're right down the street, we live right next to the high school, so we definitely want to make sure that we bring as much as we can, eyes, ears, and more importantly, cash to this wonderful city and keep doing great things here and not get forgotten.
Thank you again.
Hey, guys.
JR Studios?
I apologize for cutting you off there, but-
Y'all good.
You have the floor.
Good evening. Uh, my name is James Cahalan. I am a Duncanville High School alumni, graduated class of two thousand and nine, and I'm a long resident here for over twenty years. Um, this is, this has been the only city that I've known for over twenty years. Um, my love of art began here, and it started actually at Central Elementary. Um, that's where I learned the impact of creativity and the importance of art and, uh, in students. Um, my journey, uh, went to Byrd, where I had an after-school art program, and that's where my art interest really expanded. Um, that's where I joined an art club and encouraged me to explore and take creative risk. It was at Duncanville High School that my passion really took flight. I had an amazing teacher who believed in me, showed me that art could be more than just a pastime, it's my purpose. Um, those early experiences is what created me now. Um, today, I am an award-winning artist and educator. Um, I want to give back to the community that first inspired me. Um, through JR Studios, I want to create a after-school art program for youth in Duncanville called Creative Canvas, uh, hosted at Village Tech Schools. This program will provide a safe and inspiring space where young people can explore painting, drawing, sculpture, and mixed media. But more importantly, they'll learn confidence, discipline, and creative expression. Every young person deserves that moment when someone says your art matters. With your support, we'll pass the spark to the next generation and continue Duncanville's legacy as a city that values creativity, culture, and community. Thank you for your time and for believing in the power of the arts in Duncanville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next applicant is not here. This is, the applicant is Punk Social. The grant type was a public art grant, described in the project summary as a comedy showcase featuring the best comedians in Dallas and Texas, bringing a different late-night energy into town to attract not only kids and the parents, but also a forgotten age group of twenty-to-fifty-year-olds who are seeking alternative fun. The event date in the application was December sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and the amount request was forty-five hundred dollars. Next up is Mr. Kingo.
Uh, Mr. Coats, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed it again.
Sorry, tha- thank you, Mayor. Just sorry, was there a, there, is there a location identified for that event?
There was, there was not an identifi- uh, location identified in the application. Uh, let me double check. No location identified. Location pending upon approval.
Okay. Thank you. Sure.
Thank you. All right, sir, you have the floor now. Come on up, I apologize again. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you. Good evening. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, my name is Richard Kinga, and this vision is, is simple. Accompany what we all have already existing with music. Duncanville, City of Champions in Harmony. Basically, what we're looking at is you're walking in the park that I've been walking out here like for a year now with a friend who's been walking out here for eight years. You listen to the whispers of the trees, of, um, maybe, uh, a, a family from Ukraine that has been given some temporary, um, you know, home here in, in Duncanville. And they're, they're, they're having a conversation in the park. And, um, an elderly gentleman who was walking and he's saying hi to every, every person he meets, and he does a high-five, some enthusiastic young kid who is running all around the park in no time. The whispers of this park has, is the muse, is what has ignited the music. I sing passionately, I, I am an artist. I, I, I come from a background, I come from a country in Africa called Cameroon. And in Cameroon, we've got two-hundred-and-fifty different ethnicities. And we succeeded to use English and French and compose a wonderful song for the women's soccer team, um, competition in two thousand and sixteen. Now, you could say, how can we put Duncanville in, in three minutes, forty seconds? We can. Duncanville, City of Champions in Harmony. That harmony can accompany our businesses. You walk into the City Council and you hear a certain anthem, a certain sound, a certain energy, a certain buoyancy from every aspect of what Duncanville is, just like the park out here, where you would meet everybody from every ethnicity and from every age group. That's what I am, we're proposing here. It's us. It's not I, I can just be a facilitator, but what we're saying is, what we already have as, as, as City of Champions, we can add music into it, we can add more visibility into it, we can make it much more, um, welcoming and announce our presence and celebrate our differences, our identity, in various ways, but ways that will build bridges. And these bridges- but ways that would build bridges. And these bridges are what we need now. And those bridges would help us in harmony to sing, to glorify, to celebrate, and to make sure that what we have is the best. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you here. I made a couple of copies. I'm just gonna hand this around.
Hand them to the city secretary, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll leave it right here, but the passion is real. Let's just add some more color onto what we already have that exists. And better way to do it than a song. Beautiful music. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Brenda Randall.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Randall, uh, but affectionately, everyone calls me B. Randall. I am a poet and a host and curator of poetic events uh, out of Dallas, Texas. And uh, but I also do things around uh, in different uh, cities around Dallas and uh, as far as Paris, Texas, Nacogdoches. Um, I'm here to present today, in the words of a sister, it is the longest-running all-female poetry show of its kind. Uh, it's almost twenty years old in its legacy. I started thinking, hey, I just want to present a show uh, that is not about competition, but gives women a platform to share their stories. And as they share their stories, they create uh, community uh, so that other people will know that they're not the only ones going through something and just to join us collectively through the arts. Um, in the words of a sister, uh, the uh, stories and verse that I would like to present uh, in uh, Duncanville is about uh, women who not only uh, write poetry, but they also are musically inclined. Uh, throughout the years when I've done this show, um, it has always generated, I thought my first audience would be fifty people and then uh, it was three hundred. And then after that, people started calling me uh, saying, oh, when is the show? And I didn't know that there was supposed to be another show. And then so we get to seventeen, eighteen years later and we're still doing the show. So I would love to bring that here to Duncanville um, for one evening and uh, just communicate uh, and share poetry as we connect community and culture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Morris with Kingsman Coffee.
Good evening. Um, just to let you know, we're gonna bring uh, Lord say the same, in the words of a sister, to the shop. So uh, collaboration, collaboration is, is, as they say now, is the new income. So just uh, just expect that coming, coming at, 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 at uh, Kingsman Coffee. Uh, my name is Jimmy Morris. I am the founder and so-owner of Kingsman Coffee. Uh, we have uh, requested this grant. Uh, this is something that we're already doing at this moment. Um, as you guys know, we're located off of Cedar Ridge and, and um, West Wheeling Road. Um, as a business owner, uh, first-time uh, business owner of, of a restaurant, it has been difficult. Uh, I have learned through my tenure uh, with this coffee shop that art has brought the community together more than any other um, effort um, to generate more income, to sustain the business. And um, I um, believe that um, collaborating, right, with, with artists and uh, both in the uh, uh, in a magician or, or song or lyrics, or even art has um, has benefited the, the uh, the business. Uh, as you can see, um, we have um, we have poets and, and, and our events happen um, during, uh, throughout the day. Uh, I mean, I'm sorry, during parts of the day. I'm, I'm a little bit nervous, so forgive me. Um, but as you can see, we have spoken words and live music and we do partnership, partner up with uh, local artists as well. Sorry. Um, we, I would like to use part of this grant to market to um, our big vendors. I would say our big fives here in Duncanville, the hotels, right? Uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, our business or, or the Field House here in Duncanville. And then to other businesses, that has been our biggest, biggest stroke is how to get that. So I want to utilize this grant partially to do that. Uh, and then also just build awareness of the shop. We have customers coming um, every day saying that we, they didn't know we exist. So um, I think u- utilizing this platform of getting artists and bringing artists to the shop would help generate, help us generate business, but also um, bring, bring uh, more people to, to the city. Uh, as you said, we have had plays, monologues from Peter Pan, um, uh, verses of awe, which is our poet night. And we do a, what we call a coffee and lyrics, or what I'm calling everything, uh, Kingsman Live. We bring artists here in uh, Duncanville in the morning time uh, on Saturday. And usually, as I have learned, this is a bedroom community. Um, that's the best time to, to bring the community together for this coffee shop. And I think that was it. Okay. I, I had a, a slide with uh.
We have a, we have a question for you, Mr. Coons.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Coons.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you s- but you said there was more to your presentation.
Well, I, I thought my, my wife, who is my.
No, don't do it. Don't do it. Just stop, just stop there. Yeah, we're not gonna get you.
It's been a long day, but. We, I had a, I actually had uh, a um, uh, Texas Ranger come and do a um, a interview and that was, I wanted to show that slide because it pretty much was similar to what was presented, presented today. But um, I guess we don't have it, but that's it, that's it.
Okay. So my, my question was, are, are you applying for a, a specific event?
No, no, no. I, I actually, this uh, Kingsman Live is, is what I'm calling um, having poets and having um, entertainers come in on a weekend, Saturday, if not Sunday, we do, we do gospel brunches too, but uh, dur- during those days and times. And maybe some on a weekend uh, to come to the shop throughout a certain period uh, of the year.
Right. And, and these are activities you already have, they're ongoing, right?
Yes, yes. It's um, yes, yes, it is. I, I want to do more and it's, it's becoming um, it's becoming taskable for us to sustain the business. And so this will really help us still have those events and then push other funds to, to, to run the business. So.
So, so the grant will be for, uh, I guess a series of ongoing events and activities, arts-related.
Yes, yes, and I'm, I'm identifying any live entertainment as I'm branding it Kingsman Live. So any poets, any, any uh, anyone who comes and play instruments, any plays, the monologues that we may bring, uh, it'd be used, it'd be used for that.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And then, just for clarity, did I hear you say you were just interviewed by the Texas Rangers?
Yes, we had, um, who was the MVP for?
Oh, I thought it was the law enforcement people. I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It was, it was MVPs.
Uh, who knows who the MVP of the Texas Ranger?
It's um, I'll tell you after, but it, it's, it's on a PowerPoint if you want to see it, though.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions?
Well, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that, that um, things are going well for you right now. And I have seen the uh, some of the music venues you've had there. So it's uh, uh, been a very uh, I, I think it's, it's unique, one of the most unique places we have in Duncanville right now, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, uh, Mayor Portem Gooden has a question for you, Alex.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, maybe I overlooked it. Were there attachments for the applications in our packet? Or will that be on the next agenda?
I, for what I sent over was basically the, uh, the applications as the Arts Commission reviewed them. So some of this, that the content you've seen tonight was additional that they created for tonight's presentation.
Oh, okay.
Uh, there, there is, with the exception of the next one, and I will show you some of the graphics that were sent over to the Arts Commission for this one, which is for the.
And then um, I want to go back to Shayla. Is that public art installation or is that, because I think there's a difference between art installation, that right there, versus um, any other art activity. Is art installation capped out at three thousand? And if you don't know now, just um, whenever they come back, if we could discuss that.
Uh, I know that with a, with something like this where it's three-dimensional, I was already having a conversation with them out in the lobby saying we're probably gonna have to have other conversations because it's not just a straight-up mural or sign.
Right.
And uh, this is another one of those which it's probably gonna have to somehow um, be addressed in the policy and in the application. But the Arts Commission did figure out a way, they discussed this pretty thoroughly for them to make the recommendation on this.
Okay, but it's not capped at?
How they applied for was an annual arts program grant, which this doesn't qualify for because that is for nonprofits only.
Okay. Alright, I don't want to confuse this anymore. I just
So they were trying to.
noticed it and it seems that this would be um, a little bit more detail with it being three-dimensional and a permanent where the public can view it just by passing and not having to go inside. Then that would qualify for um, a different level if I recall correctly, but I could be wrong.
When the Arts Commission reviewed this, they chose to reclassify it or recommend a reclassification to a single project support grant.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I can look up real quick what that cap is.
No, I don't want to delay us any longer. I just wanted to throw that out there and whenever it comes back, then possibly reconsider.
I'll make sure I bring that up on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
I'll make sure that include that.
Thank you.
The last two applicants were not able to be here tonight. Uh, the applicant, what, this applicant was Sarah U. Fine Art. She applied for a single project support grant. And her goal was to make a portfolio synopsis of stories from women after reaching a certain age. She wants their stories to be heard through interview and paintings as a figurative description. The event date is July 23rd to January 14th, 26th. And the amount request was seventeen hundred dollars. And these are some of the examples of artwork that she did send over to the Arts Commission. And then last, uh, applicant is Bria Maiden. She applied for a single project support grant. The Superfly Winter Wonder Dance is the culminating event of our twelve-week dance program, celebrating the hard work, creativity, and growth of our students. The showcase will feature live performances by program participants, highlighting the skills and routine, routines they have learned throughout the season. In addition to student performances, the event will spotlight local artists, creating a vibrant and inspiring community celebration of dance, music, and culture. The event date is scheduled for December 12th, 2025. The amount request was twenty thousand dollars. And while she could not be here, she did send a message. So at this point, the intention is to bring this back to you on November 8th with the Arts Commission's recommendations and uh, your final decision.
Uh, Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of questions. So I believe I heard that we will get the applications.
Could have the applications on their own attached to this agenda. I thought that I had included those.
Okay, I, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see them. It said attachments, but they weren't there, so.
Then I will make sure that they are on the November eighteenth. You're gonna get a much more robust package for the eighteenth.
Okay. Uh, interim city manager. Uh, if, if we could get those applications ASAP, I know he said he's gonna have them for the, the next meeting, but uh, if we could get them sooner than later.
Okay. Yeah, we, we, we can get that information as soon as possible, once we have everything in, in advance of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And then uh, could we, I want to add a question or two for the Chair of the Arts Commission. If, for, no, for the Chair of the Arts Commission.
Get used to it.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations on
Thank you.
your appointment. And I know you, maybe you had one, maybe one meeting in that
One meeting.
position so far. So uh, if, if you don't have answers to these questions tonight, we can talk later.
Okay.
Uh, but as far as the, could you just kind of speak in general? And if you, if you can speak specifically good, but to the criteria um, and, and maybe the, the purpose of these, these grants and what you all as a, as Arts Commission, what you're looking for when you're looking for approvals?
When we're doing the um, reviews and for approvals, the grants are to uh, promote tourism and bring arts to the uh, Duncanville area. What we expect from artists, once they um, do the grants and make the request and do their program, they inform us ahead of time of the program so that we can hopefully attend and things like that. And then we want a report from them afterwards as to, just some feedback, get some metrics from them about how it went and was it successful and things like that. Um, since it's sort of new in the process, we are giving grace to um, a lot of artists. And we're re, we're gonna be reviewing the um, policy and the guidelines because it seems to be some confusion um, about, I've seen some areas where when they fill out the application, there may be some confusion in some areas as to what they be, should be selecting and what categories they fall under. And to answer your question, it was three thousand dollars for um, the mural. And to answer your question, it was three thousand dollars for the mural, because like they said, he, it would, he's not a nonprofit, so he couldn't apply for the grant that he did select. And so we wanted to give him something, and that's why we selected the three thousand, because we knew he qualified under that.
Thank you. Actually, and, sorry, well, it's, no, actually, not for you, thank you. And this might be maybe for Alex, and I don't know if this is a, I don't know if it's a budget question, though, in regards, in relation to these grants. But so in, in our report, I think it said that the available budget is seventy, seventy-three thousand, somewhere around in there. Seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars is.
As I understand it, it's being budgeted, the budget year is ninety-five thousand dollars. What's currently available as actual funds in there is like seventy, seventy-three.
Okay, and so tonight, we had nine applicants, it sounds right. And each one of those, at least for this grant, is capped at three thousand dollars. And my understanding, at least, it says that this is a, this is a first quarter of the, the grant cycle, right? So will we be expecting three more quarters throughout the rest of this budget year? So that, those numbers right there, okay. So forty-two thousand.
That was the last fiscal year, so that was the disbursement, the, the fourteen applicants in the last group had requested forty-two thousand dollars. But that was in the previous fiscal year, so now, at this point, I had discussed this with Jennifer Odie, and she said that there was ninety-five thousand dollars scheduled, that was budgeted for this year, and at this point, deposits that were, that deposits that were made, I can speak, came out to like seventy-three and change. So, but it is budgeted to get to ninety-five that they can spend.
Okay, and so I just kind of confirmed the numbers in this, maybe just some food for thought for the Commissioners and for us, and we're looking at these. So if we were to approve, if we were to approve nine tonight at three thousand dollars, so that's twenty-seven thousand dollars, right? For the first quarter, is that right?
This is just a presentation.
Sorry, sorry, not, not, if we were to approve, not tonight, but if we were to approve all of these at three thousand dollars, it would be twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand dollars, is that correct? People that know math.
Well, one of them was, one of them exceeded the three thousand dollars. Do we have a total of the nine requests? Do you have a total?
It, it is, the, the total that they requested is the fifty-six thousand, six hundred.
But they're all capped at three thousand, so they wouldn't, we wouldn't approve anything over three thousand for this particular type of grant, right?
You, I mean, you have the ability to, as the council, choose what you want to award the grants at.
We have one request that exceeded the, the three thousand.
You have one request that's twenty thousand.
So my understanding is that we could approve them over three thousand, is that what?
It is in the poli, it's on the, as I understand, because you are City Council and control the budget, yes, you, their budget, yes, you have the ability to choose up or down.
What, what we, so when the Arts Commission, so are, would we take that as a recommendation then? Okay, so we, we could potentially approve, if they're applying for thirty or forty thousand. If they apply for more than three thousand, we can approve over that.
So the first time we did this, that's included in the resolution language, that you can choose the amount that you want to approve. So the Arts Commission is only set to recommend, per the funding policy and per their setup. They make recommendations to you, you make the final decision, including who you want to fund, who you don't want to fund, how much you want to fund them for.
Okay, all right, appreciate, and again, these are just something for us to think about. So it sounds like we can approve over the three thousand, first of all. And then, but secondly, which was actually my original point, is that there is a limited budget here, so we want to keep that in mind. And this is just one quarter, so if we've got three other quarters of individuals applying, you know, we just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're reviewing these carefully and making good selections with the limited budget that we have. And this is just one type of grant, right? There are other types of grants that can be applied for.
They have three grant categories, and the applications covered the different categories.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mayor.
And just if I might add, in the packet will be included all of the applications. If they turned in a budget, that is one of the things that is required in the application, is to turn in a budget. If they turn in the budget, you will get that. And you will also get the minutes from the Arts Commission's meeting, so that you can see what the votes were, what the decisions were. I am having a challenge with getting the video posted, because it keeps getting flagged. I'm gonna try a different path, so that I can get that to you, because I've had some technical issues with that, that's why it's not posted.
And Alex, I wanted to thank you, because you and Ms. Thor Paris and the Commission, because this is all brand new, is completely new for, for all of us, right? And we see that we do have some, you know, as we're going through, we're learning as we're going, right? And so, you know, I want to thank you for your patience, and I know you're, you're working really hard to, you know, get us to, to where we need to be. And again, thank you, Ms. Thor Paris, for, for working through all these challenges, because, I mean, this, this is wonderful that we can do this, but we want to make sure we get to where we're doing it right, so thanks for helping us get there.
And it's our, and it's the goal of the Arts Commission, that I bring back the policy, not ahead of this, of the eighteenth, but soon afterwards, as we get more of this type of feedback, as we get more of this kind of information that can inform the policy. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing that Mr. Coons' light is out, I have a question. This, these applicants that have come before us tonight, and it may have, I may have just crossed over the staff report and didn't see something I should have seen. Have they all been, have these all been approved by the Arts Commission before they came here?
So the Arts Commission's process for judging the applications is to do it based on the application only. They have not asked for the applicants to, they actually have asked that the applicants not present to them in person, so that they can go in and judge it based on the merits of their policy, on hot tax laws, on the, the funding policy that the city created. So that is the approach that they're taking. The idea with doing this is taking up that, that concept of having you briefed before you make a decision, and giving the applicants an opportunity to appeal to you, to let you see what they're talking, their, what their project is, and have them bring that to you before you, you make a decision in the next meeting.
I think I'm more confused now.
I apologize.
So let me back up. The process does include approval or recommendations that will be, that haven't been done yet by the Arts Commission? They have been.
The, the Arts Commission met on the, on October tenth.
On all of these?
On all of these, and they have made their recommendations.
So the recommendation is coming to us in some time, and I'm not sure when.
They will come to you, they're intended to come to you on, on November eighteenth. So this way, you can kind of see them without having that preconception.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that explanation. I'm, I'm sorry, that, I hadn't made that connection, so thank you for that. Also, how many times in twenty-six will, will there be more applicants?
There are four cycles.
There are four cycles, and you have how much money?
At this point, it's budgeted for ninety-five thousand dollars.
Ninety-five thousand, if we just use tonight as an example, if we approved everything on the eighteenth, you're well into your, your budget allotment, correct?
If, if, if you did, yes. But I can tell you this with confidence, that the Arts Commission spends a lot of time taking that exact thought and approaching it with that, understanding that they have to make the funds available throughout the year.
Yes.
That there are projects that are gonna come to them in four cycles, they are very aware of that, and trying to be very diligent and responsible with that.
Yeah, that fourth cycle could get really tight, but all worthwhile groups and presentations tonight, which I appreciate. Any other further questions, comments, Ms. Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, the fifty-six thousand, that's the total of the projects altogether. But the, I just want to make sure I understand, fifty-six thousand includes the total of the projects? And then the three thousand or whatever that total is, is different from the fifty-six thousand?
The fifty-six thousand is the total dollar amount that was requested.
That was requested, right.
That is not reflective of the, what it's qualified for.
What is being recommended by the Arts Commission is a different number, though.
In, in some instances, people did shoot for the moon and say, I want all of it. And the Arts Commission evaluated that and said, okay, this is what you applied for, this is what you are doing. This is how this goes with the policy, this is how it goes with hot funds. So the Arts Commission, the, the applicant, in the end, they're, they're asking for what they, they need. And then the Arts Commission has to be that first, that first way of vetting it.
Right, so if they come in requesting at ten, that's included in fifty-six thousand. But however, what the Arts is recommending is a different amount, because they know that they have a limited budget of ninety-five thousand a year. So they know they can't meet at first, the very first quarter, fifty-six thousand, because that would wipe all, wipe out at least most of, half of their budget, their projected budget of ninety-five thousand. So if, if the hotels should do better than what's projected, the budget could be higher. But we won't know that until we get to quarter three and quarter four, basically, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they, they're having to keep track of how much that they're spending. So each time I bring them a new set of applications, each time I bring you a new set of applications, what I'm gonna try to do is make sure that the number, the amount that's requested, how much is in the balance, and then, of course, what the Arts Commission has recommended. So I will tell you that the Arts Commission did not recommend, recommend funding all of these.
Right, that's what I'm getting to.
They did not recommend funding all of these in the amounts that they requested.
Right.
In some cases, they recommended changing the category that they applied for, so that they could get them to a place where they could, they could make it work within the policy and what they were asking for. But they were very, very cautious with what they did.
Exactly, exactly, so they took in consideration their budget that they have for the year, knowing fifty-six thousand would completely wipe out more than half of their projected ninety-five thousand.
I don't know that they took that approach. I would say from watching them participating in this, from my vantage point, what they did was they looked at the qualification, they looked at what the application was, what was being asked, how it qualified, and also what they applied for. If it was a first-time applicant, and they were applying for a dollar amount above the three thousand, they went to that default of their first-time applicant, they, they can apply for three thousand. So they, they were very, they weren't just handing out money.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much. A lot of hard work goes into this, we appreciate it. All right, so that wraps up our proclamations and presentations, and we move on to item six, citizens' input. City Secretary, did we receive any electronic submittals? Okay, so we did get one, and that will be entered into the record. So before I start with citizens' input, just as a reminder, we only have two. And the, the rules state that you have two minutes. And when you come up, please state your name and address. I will start with Sandy Sirochi.
I'll talk real fast. I just wanted to give a report on the Sister City visit. And I, when I was sitting there, and I think, oh, there's a lot I didn't add. First thing that we did, we had some big feats.
Could you go, could you go ahead and state your name and address?
Oh, Sandra Siroki, nine-one-three St. Andrews, DeSoto, Texas.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we collaborated with the Fort Worth Sister City program and also with the state. This is the first time we've been able to do that with the city of Duncanville and the city of Monasterola. We became a, a part of Sister City International. Our big feat, too, was we, we became a nonprofit, we have nonprofit status now. We had twenty-four citizens from Monasterola come, a three-year-old, a seven-year-old, a ten-year-old, three couples, and fifteen single men and women that ranged in ages from twenty-three to sixty-two. We had fifteen host families from every voting district in Duncanville. This has been a nine-month-long joint effort between the city of Duncanville and the community at large, and this has been very successful. What their top things that, I wanted feedback from them, and what they said their top things was their interaction with the families in Duncanville, the, visiting the high school, visiting the city, the touring the Capitol with Jane Nelson, the Secretary of State, San Antonio and Fort Worth. So this opportunity gave Duncanville a lot of visibility on every visit. In two years, we'll be going there, we're taking applications already, and it'll be the thirtieth anniversary. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay, I have a card here from Mark Graham, but I believe he's left. Okay, so that concludes our citizen input, and with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda, item seven. And do I have a?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Mac Burnett.
Second.
Second, by Mayor Protem Gooden, please vote. Thank you. Item eight, item for individual consideration. There are no actions to be taken as a result of executive session. Item B, consider resolution acknowledging receipt of documentation and commitment from KKMD Investments. We have someone presenting?
Is the applicant here? Oh, hello, good evening. Sorry about the delay, I thought it was gonna take a few, a few minutes to get to this, to this item. I obviously miscalculated that one, but here we are. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Secretary, City Attorney Victor Barrera, Economic Development Director. I'm here to present this, this property that we've been discussing for quite some time about bringing back into productive use. My understanding is that it's been over twenty years that we wanted to do something with the sites. What you have in front of you is just an aerial picture of this, of the property, it's approximately four-point-six acres. The current zoning designation of the property is General Office Retail District. And this property is within the TIF district, which is set to expire in twenty-thirty-six. And just wanted to take this opportunity to do a quick run, run-through of the key terms of the purchase and sale agreement that was executed back in February earlier this year. So the price, the price for the property is one million dollars, twenty thousand. There was twenty-five thousand dollars of earnest money that was provided upon the execution of the agreement. And then there was another ten thousand dollars provided in exchange for a thirty-day extension of the inspection period. The inspection period has now been completed. And if you're okay with the items that have been submitted through the laid-out terms of the purchase-sale agreement, we would seek your authorization to have the City Manager sign all the necessary documents associated with the closing and the transfer of ownership of this property within sixty days after City Council approval. But again, what we've been trying to do for quite some time is bring this property back into productive use. back into productive use. We have a developer that has a national branded hotel that is interested in, uh, developing a portion of the site. What we have provided to you as part of the post-inspection, uh, documents is they've provided the development plan for the branded hotel, which is the, uh, Residence Inn by Marriott's. Uh, confirmation of hotel brand, flag, and operator commitment. Uh, I provided to you a copy of the franchise, uh, franchise agreement. In the slide, you will see the cover page and the signature page of that franchise agreement. Um, also conceptual site plan and with building elevations and access points, uh, that has been provided, and I will share that here in a little, a little bit in another, in another slide. Uh, the construction and completion timeline, I will, uh, run that by you real quick here uh, in a little bit, and the financial, uh, and feasibility document demonstrating project viability. Uh, so what you have before you is the conceptual site plan that shows the layout of the proposed hotel with an opportunity in the balance of the site for another potential hotel and a restaurant use on the north end. Again, this is the conceptual plan that was provided to us at the end of the inspection period. Um, and this is also the conceptual landscaping plan that is provided to us for our review and comments. These are the proposed building elevations for, for the Residence Inn. And in that, you will see that the, per the terms of the franchise agreement, um, the construction start deadline is October first, uh, 2026, but the opening deadline for this new facility is April first, 2028. And again, this is, this, uh, this is found in the franchise agreement. The projected revenues out of this, uh, initial investment, uh, we're looking at about a twenty million dollar investment for this, for this proposed hotel. We're anticipating two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in hot fund revenue. Uh, this is assuming a four million dollar sales, uh, volume for this establishment. But also, we're looking at a annual property tax revenue of three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars approximately. Um, and this is assuming a fully assessed property at twenty million dollars. Uh, as I mentioned before, the city's been working for quite some time on bringing this property back into productive use, um, making sure that the property brings sales, sales tax and property tax revenue as well as creates jobs. Uh, for this initial phase, we're looking at a creation of twenty to thirty-five jobs. Um, with the investment of this size, twenty million dollars, we're hoping and we're actually confident that this will be a catalyst for additional, uh, investment in the area, aside from that owned by the property, um, because again, there is a significant amount of movement and investment. Uh, but at the same token, what's being proposed this evening aligns with the city's economic development goals and objectives. Um, we have here a couple of recommendations for council's consideration. Recommendation number one would be to adopt the resolution acknowledging receipt of all required purchase-sale agreement documentation and the developer's commitment to proceed. And then, uh, number two is authorizing interim city manager to take all necessary actions to complete the sale and proceed with the closing. Now, that said, I have asked Mike and Daisy Patel, the buyers, the managing partners of this entity, to be here to, uh, one, to meet them, but two, to answer any questions that you may have regarding the development of the sites, um, the terms of the franchise agreements, their conversations with other end-users for the balance of the sites. Um, so, uh, they are here and they are prepared to answer any questions that you may, uh, you may have regarding their interest in the site. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I don't see, um, did you want to speak?
If you have any questions, we're here to answer.
Well, I don't see any lights on at this time. Uh, if you have, if you have something you'd like to say other than answering questions, which there are none right now. You're welcome to speak.
So, as you can see, there is a phase one and a phase two. So, phase one is already, um, approved by Residence Inn by Marriott. Phase two is, depends on, uh, the performance base. But, um, as we've discussed about, uh, having end-users as restaurants or other uses, we've reached out to a couple of, uh, national chains, but, um, because of the, uh, visibility, it's not feasible to have any residence chain there. So, now we're at the point where, uh, potentially going to have another hotel. Of course, we'll have a branded hotel, but which, we don't have the commitment for, uh, from the brand yet, uh, for the second hotel pad.
Okay. Okay, um. If there's, I've seen no lights, so there's no questions. I'm going to ask the, um, city attorney to, um, we had prepared a motion.
So, um, if you all agree. Uh, so the motion would be a motion to postpone, um, so that we can workshop this item during a work session on November eighteenth of 2025. There are, just to walk through some issues, just to make sure that there are no unwanted use of the property.
We, we have a motion, uh, Mr. Coons.
Yes, sir. Just one, one comment before we, uh, move forward with, with any motions is, uh, when we began, uh, our council member, uh, remarks, and there were some remarks about, um, informing the public. And if, if, if we have an opportunity, this being public, uh, publicly-owned asset, if there is an opportunity for us to provide, uh, it, between now and any action that we take, uh, whether that's a town hall or, or some opportunity for the public to have information about what's potentially going to happen here, to make sure that we provide that opportunity. And that being said, I'd like to make the motion, uh, as stated by the city attorney.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, approve the motion made by our city attorney. Have a second by Councilman Pennebaker? Please vote. Okay, just want you to understand that. This is simply so that we are more aware, we, we can workshop, uh, a certain facet of this so that we can be more aware in making the decision. By no means do we want you walking away thinking, "We don't want you here," okay? So, it's just a technicality that we need to work out before we can finalize the agreement. But, um, that will, that will take place on the next meeting on November eighteenth. Okay? All right, any other comments or questions?
Uh, just a quick comment, Mayor. I want to thank you for, for doing that because, uh, honestly, I was expecting a little more of a presentation tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, as, as well, but, but, uh, you know, we're, we're definitely, um, interested in, in kind of moving forward with, with this thing, but, but, you know, uh, we've extended a courtesy to y'all to, to do your due diligence and stuff, so we're asking you to extend a courtesy, uh, so that we can do our due diligence.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, we'll move on now to, uh, item nine, staff and board reports. Item A seven, Highway sixty-seven, temporary tag enforcement. Assistant Chief Adrian Tirina.
Good evening, Council, city manager, mayor. I'm here to introduce one of your night shift patrol watch commanders, Lieutenant Reagan Goodwin. He's going to give you a presentation on a proposal that he submitted to me as part of our hotspot policing initiative. Uh, I give all credit to Lieutenant Goodwin. He developed this, he came up with a plan of action. I merely, uh, put the wheels in motion, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Tirina. And good evening, uh, mayor and council. Uh, he gives me all the kudos, but a lot of it also goes up to collaboration with my peers and those who have more experience than me just at this point. Um, so I appreciate all their help in getting this ready as well. Uh, so the purpose of this, uh, project was really to make an attempt at addressing some of the issues the department, uh, has faced because of vehicles that have temporary tags, specifically fictitious temporary tags. Uh, some of these issues include their use to conceal the identity of, of vehicles used in crimes, which makes those difficult to investigate. They're used to conceal the identity of stolen vehicles, and sometimes those end up being sold to unsuspecting individuals who may end up buying them off Facebook Marketplace or offer up, have no idea they're purchasing stolen property. Um, and vehicles that are operated with fictitious temporary tags are very regularly, do not have any form of insurance. Uh, so if they're involved in crashes, it makes those difficult as well and causes added undue burden onto the other parties that are involved in those accidents. And the very basic plan for this, uh, project was just to have, uh, officers dedicated to traffic enforcement who didn't have to worry about routine patrol matters, um, conduct traffic on these vehicles, uh, in a target area. Uh, the target area that was chosen was the Highway sixty-seven corridor, and this is mainly because of the locations that lie within it, uh, that account for a good portion of the city's crime. Just a few examples of these locations, uh, you have the hotels, La Quinta, Best Western, Holiday and Express. Uh, you have businesses and restaurants, Costco, Papado, Winco, LA Fitness. Uh, you have some major neighborhoods and apartment complexes, Hollywood Park, Bell Rosello, and Candlelight, and then a, uh, major event center, uh, in the city, uh, Duncanville Fieldhouse. These are all target-rich areas, uh, for crime, and specifically vehicle property crimes, your stolen vehicles, vehicle burglaries. Uh, because of their large densely-packed parking lots, uh, they provide plenty of potential victims, and people can come in, commit the crime, uh, fairly undetected, and flee using the highway, all within a fairly short period of time. Uh, so the timeline that was chosen was June fifth through July fifth. Uh, each day of this operation, there were two four-hour blocks, one from six AM to ten AM, and one from six PM to ten PM. Uh, this was done so we could take advantage of high-traffic times in the morning and in the evening and kind of split that visibility and that enforcement over the day. Each shift would have up to three officers, uh, using mostly the regular patrol equipment that they would have, vehicle, computer, things like that. Uh, but they also had access to an OBD reader, uh, which can be plugged into the port in a vehicle, and it'll give you some identifying information, as well as our mobile flock cameras, uh, so they could track suspect vehicles, or should those end up coming into the area, or, uh, keep track of vehicles bearing temporary license plates that had already been determined to be fictitious. Here are just some examples of what we're looking for. Um, on the top row, uh, is what the format was for temporary tags at the time our enforcement was going on. Uh, and the bottom row is just a few of the different examples of fictitious tags. Uh, and these go from, all the way from being near-perfect to what, uh, the format should be, all the way to what you see in the bottom right, which is just handwritten tags. It's funny, but we've seen it. So, when on patrol for this operation, uh, officers would do one of two things. One, they would, um, observe a vehicle that was displaying a paper tag, uh, that they could readily identify as fictitious, conduct a traffic stop, uh, and investigate, determine the real identity of the vehicle, and take any other enforcement action that was needed. Or they would observe a regular temporary tag that looked real, may not have been, uh, observe it, commit an unrelated traffic violation, conduct a traffic stop, um, and then investigate to ensure that that, uh, tag was legitimate. So, ultimately, uh, thirty overtime shifts out of a possible one-hundred-and-seventy-four were signed up for. Um, this approximately, uh, totaled into a hundred-and-twenty overtime hours, um, resulting in fifty-five traffic stops, thirty-nine citations, six towed vehicles, nine fictitious tags seized, and three arrests. If we wanted to break down, that down a little bit more, the most citations issued were for no driver's license, no insurance, or failure to maintain financial responsibility, and expired registration. The arrests were for an outside agency warrant, uh, marijuana possession, and unlawful carry of a weapon, and all six vehicle toes were for no insurance. Moving on to some of the crime data, um, as we go through the next few slides, I'd like you to pay attention to the, uh, little hotspot map on the left side of your screen. Uh, you'll notice these spots that pop up don't really change. These are all of those locations that we went over earlier in the presentation. Uh, so from, if we go back last year, the same June fifth to July fifth, uh, period, uh, experienced six stolen vehicles and nine vehicle burglaries for a total of fifteen vehicle property offenses. Fast forward back up to this year, uh, from May fourth and June fourth, the month immediately prior to the enforcement period, uh, we had seven stolen vehicles, six vehicle burglaries for a total of thirteen offenses. The enforcement period itself experienced one stolen vehicle, eight vehicle burglaries for a total of nine offenses. And the month immediately after the enforcement period, July sixth to August sixth, uh, had five stolen vehicles, eleven vehicle burglaries for a total of sixteen offenses. Uh, some of the basic comparisons and interpretations that we made from this data, um, is just that the enforcement period itself experienced a reduction in the amount of vehicle property crimes compared to not only the same period last year, uh, but the month on either side of it, um, which is at least partially attributed, um, to the increased visibility and enforcement action that we took as the police department. Thank you, and I can take any questions.
Just real quick, um, on the last slide that you showed with those hotspots, I think that's what you called them. Could you go back to that one?
Yes, sir.
That one there. Uh, i- is it safe to assume that to the north, outside of this particular Duncanville area, to the north in Dallas and to the south in Cedar Ridge, Cedar Hill, that they would have similar activity?
The, the issues that we experience with corridors are the same that experienced in every other law enforcement agency.
Okay. Okay, but, but the, uh, overall, uh, when this program started, the, and, and by the way, I, I thought that I had read earlier this year that the, um, that the Department of Motor Vehicles was no longer going to issue paper tags?
Uh, yes, and these kind of issues are one of the major deciding factors into that move.
So, the bad guys haven't got that memo yet?
Not quite.
Okay.
Thankfully.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions? All right, well, job well done. Thank you so much for the, uh, and you're on night shift, that's why I've never seen you before.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, it is nighttime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Hello, council, mayor, staff. Um, so my name is Devin Hanley, I'm your special events planner, and we're just going to talk about Hispanic Heritage, and I'm going to try to be super quick. Um, so as we know, uh, Hispanic Heritage Fest is a best-southeast event. Uh, we did have our parade to kick it off. Just a quick little reflection, the furthest west we had was people from Tolar, the furthest east were people from Terrell, the furthest north were from Aubrey, and the furthest south were DeVal. Parade route, just a reminder, this is what it was. Um, our parade participants, so we had, um, eighteen parade participants, eleven were from Duncanville, three represented the other best-southeast cities. In addition to the numbers on the park, uh, numbers of people at the park watching the parade, we had an additional five-hundred-and-thirty-two people on the parade route watching the park, which is a slight increase from last year, which had five-hundred-and-fifteen. For street closures, as a reminder, they're the same streets that we closed for Fourth of July. Trying to go quick. Um, for city council, DCDC, we had the decorated golf carts for council, we had the trucks from Freedom from, for our DCDC, as well as for the other cities. Uh, we had the VIP tent, uh, with the cooler, as well as food that was a sponsor from Subor, and the refreshments were from Antijitos Rosie Taqueria here in Duncanville. Just a reminder, that was our map. Our performers were the Hungayo Band, Te Hano Queen Forever, Los Teguidos, the Duncanville ISD Spanish Club, as well as DeGracy's Dance Studio. We had a total of fifty-four businesses and our market vendors, both market and food, twenty-three. Twenty-three were from here in Dunkinville, and thirteen were in the Best Southwest. We did have eight sponsors that were in the market that were from Dunkinville. For local press and promotion, we did have cross-sharing amongst the other cities, we had local kiosks and TVs, not only here, but also in the other cities, posters given to those cities, as well as local businesses here in Dunkinville. We had local news and magazines such as The Rambler, as well as a huge sponsorship slot from Univision, which is where we are on the 10:00 p.m. slot, as well as on the morning radio station. For event activities, we had photo ops, unfortunately, our video game truck was, he had COVID, so obviously did not want him there for that, but he will be here for Christmas. The splash pad was open, we of course had the mobile food vendors, the marketplace vendors, space painter, emergency staff. For the attendance, our peak attendance was 4.2,000. Overall, we had 8.1,000 different attendees, so that was just the number that was there at the exact same time. Our parade start time, we had about 1,400 people at the park at parade start. Let's talk budget, super quick. So our overall budget for this event was $80,000. We came in at $76,240.53. $11,123 was revenue, so that's from our vendors, application fees, things like that. We did have that $30,000 contribution from the Best Southwest cities, and we had an additional about $4,500 in sponsorships. So the overall cost to the city was $30,592.53. Here's a shout out to all of the sponsors that made this event possible. Obviously, all of the cities, Univision, Easton Law, JDES Event Decor, Methodist Charlton, Metro by T-Mobile, Precision Dental, Subor Mexicana, Freedom Jeep Chrysler, or Jeep and Dodge, Village Tech, Dunkinville Public Library, Harmony School of Excellence, the Dunkinville High School Spanish Club, and the Mobile Gambers. Just some quick little video. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you so much.
You are so welcome.
Great event, great event.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have item nine C, last item, Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Yes, I think I am the one standing between you and going home, so I will try to keep my presentation brief as well. I know it's kind of getting late, and we thought it was going to be a short meeting, right? But you have our presentation, so you can certainly go through that in more detail if you like, and always contact me if you have any questions. So we had a few changes in our department over the last quarter, this is again, for the months of August through October. We did promote Francisco Valley to our Parks Crew Leader, hired a new executive assistant, Tara Jeff, and we stole her from the City of Dallas Parks and Recreation, and she's a Dunkinville grad, so she's come home. Tyler Agee achieved his Certified Park and Recreation Executive designation, we thought he was smart, and now we've proved it. So congratulations to him, that's really a big achievement for NRPA. And then we did have three of us attend the NRPA conference over the quarter. Looking at park maintenance measurables, again, we looked at all the backflow devices inspected and made repairs. We had, we're now using Placer AI to track our park usage, so for the quarter, we had , you know, 331,000 visitors to all of our parks, that's pretty significant, so we're looking forward to measuring ourselves over time as that goes. And then we're actively planning and preparing for the upcoming, taking on the in-house mowing. We have our positions open, so if anyone's looking for a job, we have some available for you, and we are actively working with our procurement department on getting our equipment as well. Looking at some of our new installations and enhancements, we had three additional park dedication benches, and again, that's an effort through our SEMI Legacy online portal, where you can buy benches to honor your loved ones. Great programs, also a lot of other opportunities on SEMI Legacy to benefit you and our city. We had a, included some signage at Lakeside Park, added a new bulletin board out at the Lad Nature Reserve to assist the master naturalists in their efforts to inform the public about all the activities that are going on out there, and then installed new foul poles at Alexander Park. Moving to keep Dunkinville beautiful, again, we recognized Child Care Network as our Business Beautification Award winner, hosted a native landscape workshop, and then we have our upcoming Great Pumpkin recycling event, as we've hosted this a couple of years now, but we try to collect all the pumpkins that we can, and we donate those to the Easy Wildlife Rescue and Rehab Center for them to use as food for the animals. Moving to the Recreation Center, ninety-five new memberships, now over 7,000 visits, we do have one new class there, I'll highlight, is Kiddo Kinetics, that started this week. We have a couple of new programs coming this way with the game nights, with the PS5 gaming unit that we have, and then 360 volleyball, which was actually a participant and a partnership, partner at the Fieldhouse for many, many years. They have their own facility now in Arlington, so they left a couple of years ago, but they're reaching, they've reached back out and want to partner with us on doing some young kids' volleyball programs at the rec center, and so we're happy to bring them back into the fold. Again, we had three concerts, two movie nights in the park, again, we have focused our concerts on three different genres there, the country, R&B, and Latino. We had Boobash a week and a half ago, it was about 850 participants, great success at the Fieldhouse, thank them, thank them for their assistance with that. This coming Saturday, we have Movies in the Park, along with some Veterans Day programs, we have a motorcycle show, we have vendors, these are service vendors for veterans specifically. We're working with our BFW and our American Legion on this, on this event, so again, come on out this Saturday, starts at four as far as the motorcycle event and the vendors, but the movies start around 5:30 or 6:00. Following our Christmas parade coming up on December 5th, the following day, we'll have a concert in the park with Christmas carols with the lovely Lady S. And then the following weekend, we will have Cookies with Santa. Again, it's an opportunity for making cookies, decorated cookies, and then having your pictures taken with Santa. And then we'll end our season with, again, Movies in the Park, another double feature with Home Alone and the Santa Claus. The Senior Center, we had sixty-seven new and renewed memberships, had 2,800 folks eat lunch with us, always busy over there. They had a field day event, which was outstanding, invited all of the other Best Southwest senior centers over to participate, and that was a great success as well. Our Bond Election Project, we're down to the Harrington Project, that is the concession restroom facility for the baseball facility, it's now come even further along than that. The soccer facility is now 90% complete on its walls, so we, again, we were hoping to open that, we will be opening it up in the, the coming spring for both facilities. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Just real quick, your second to last slide, I think, was the Senior Center. I want to, I want to thank the folks that work in the Senior Center that set up my coffee with the mayors, I don't see them, they set it up and they're gone usually, but I do get to see them once in a while, but I really want to thank them for helping to arrange that recently. Since I've been mayor, we had one of the most well-attended, and I want to thank Julie Steger in the back for helping me, keep me on track and keep me on time, and takes my minutes for me, but it was one of the most successful, and we even, we had in excess of twenty people that showed up, and that's pretty large for that, that event. But your staff has been, been wonderful, and we appreciate the accommodations to do this, and we even had Representative Yvonne Davis show up at my last one.
That's great.
So she got to speak to the crowd a little bit, they enjoyed that, but I really do appreciate the efforts they go through to make it nice for everyone that shows up. We have a couple of lights on, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, what movies are being featured this weekend for Movies in the Park?
It is Behind Enemy Lines and Red Tails.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coates?
So first of all, I want to thank you and the Parks Crew and whoever else is involved for all the, the work at the preserve, because, you know, I know different issues come up frequently, and it seems like every time an issue comes up, you guys are on it, so, you know, so really appreciate, you know, the work that y'all are doing out there, and mediating between some of the, the organizations that are, that are doing efforts out there. I really appreciate that, and I just had a question, because when we looked at the bond projects, and we saw the concession stands, any information, information about the bridge?
We do not have any new.
I just see it right there, I just asked, and I saw it right there.
We do not have any new information about the bridge. Right now, it's in the hands of FEMA to give us some initial information about what we would be allowed to do, and again, our hope is that we work with our Public Works Department to do a flood analysis of the entire length of Ten Mile Creek through the City of Dunkinville, because this will be an issue in the Lad Nature Preserve as well, when we try to do bridges there, so it makes sense to do the entire length of Ten Mile Creek. That may delay the bridge, so we may ultimately have to de-scope that from this specific project, and release the contractor once he finishes the concession restrooms, because it may be a, a little bit longer before we can get to the point of actually building the bridge. So it's not going to go away, it's just meant to be delayed.
And, and you said that that flood study would have to be done the entire length of Ten Mile Creek?
Well, that's what's being recommended by the consultant, again, because instead of piecemealing it, you know, one little parcel at a time, it makes sense, again, the entire length was done by FEMA, was studied by FEMA back in 1979, so it's quite outdated, and the, the studies that came back from half for the, for the inland port project, they're significantly different from what FEMA shows, the flow plan is actually lower, which is good for the bridge, but the issue is that the velocities are a lot higher, and so that may cause some additional issues for us in having to armor the, the banks so they don't erode away. So there's just some challenges that we're going to have with this bridge, and I don't think we will be able to resolve them prior to, for certain, not before the, the buildings are completed. Again, but we don't hold up our final, the final process with the contractor and keep him on the hook for a year or two, to wait for this issue to be resolved, and so we may have to address it in a different way. So we'll, we'll come back and keep you informed about how that's going, and what ultimate decisions will be on how to, how to resolve that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No further lights, thank you for the report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that finalizes our last item on the agenda for this evening, so we will adjourn at 9:53 p.m. Thank you all very much for sticking with us.